Good evening, everybody. Before I gavel in the meeting and start it officially, I would like to take a moment of silence for the citizens of Ukraine. Please join me. Thank you very much. The meeting is called to order at 7:01. Before we get going, there are some things we need to discuss as we have some administrative business and then some previous, one previous public hearing that's been opened that we'd like to continue for the aquarium. That's been postponed for them for quite a while. So we've got to get that underway and done. So please be patient. We will get to the affordable housing, public hearing later on this evening. And I expect everybody will be polite and civil and have a nice civil discourse about this very important topic to the community that we all live in and enjoy. To that end, we are having, sitting here tonight, we have Ryan Deasy, Chuck Sheen, myself, Ben Filbrick, Fred Dykman, and Andy Meek is sitting in for Lynn Conway. And our two alternates are helping out. With that, Keith, it's yours to start off.
First up, we've got the minutes of the March 15th meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Ryan. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chuck.
I will abstain.
You abstain?
Abstaining.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So item 5D, administrative review items. 5D1 is 2255 ZON Two Lincoln Ave LLC zoning permit application for the expansion of a retail restaurant into adjoining retail space property located at Two Lincoln Ave Mystic, Assessors Map 174, Block 15, Lot 3, Zone LS5. This application is for the expansion of the Pasta Fresca retail restaurant into the space next door. The number of seats will remain at eight or less, so the building won't be considered a restaurant per zoning. The parking demand remains the same per zoning, and the application conforms to the bulk and use requirements of the LS5 zone.
Any questions for Keith?
Ah, no.
Make a motion to approve the application as submitted.
Thank you, Ryan. I hear a second.
Second.
Thank you, Fred. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Item 5D2, 2264 ZON Hunter Savannah LLC zoning permit application for a change of use from auto repair garage to office property located at 70 Alpha Ave Stonington, Assessors Map 79, Block 1, Lot 31. This application's for the reuse of the former Mystic Auto Center at 70 Alpha Ave. This is the auto repair and former gas station as you come out of the borough. The gas tanks have been removed there. What they're looking to do is have a general contractor's office with some outdoor equipment storage. Outdoor storage is telehandler, construction and dump trailers, ladders, staging planks, and automobiles. Fencing and landscaping are proposed to screen that. Offices are permitted as of right in LS5 zone, and that's how we've permitted contractors' businesses a lot in the past is as offices if they function as such, and that's their main activity there, and if they're not doing work onsite. So this application, it only applies to 70 Alpha Ave, not the adjacent parcel next door. There's a title marsh adjacent there on the Como property. So one of the things that we have recommended as a stipulation is that no clearing is permitted adjacent to the wetlands beyond that established in the 2009 aerial photography because it has been overgrown past what was already permitted there, you know, was already used for. So other recommended stipulations are adequate screening and landscaping shall be provided around the outdoor storage areas prior to issuance of a certificate of zoning compliance, and that the permit applies only to the 70 Alpha Ave parcel. And I believe the applicants are here if there's any specific questions for them.
Yeah, I have some questions. Does anybody else have any questions? Is the applicant here? Would you mind stepping up, please? Sorry to put you on the spotlight. What signage do you have planned? Do you have any?
None.
None? And no nighttime lighting, security lighting?
Maybe just some outdoor motion lights at the doors and around the back, mainly for security.
Right.
That's it.
And the lights in the photograph along Alpha Ave, are those actually on state property, you think? There's some overhead?
I think they are on state. They're already down.
Oh, they are?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't notice that.
Yeah, they were non-functioning anyway.
Ah, great. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of questions.
Sorry.
Good evening.
Aye.
My questions pertain to the, I guess you'd call it a site plan that was submitted with this. It looks more like an existing survey. And the survey shows an approximate wetland boundary on it. And I'm wondering what sort of activity is going to take place within that red line?
On the wetlands?
Yeah, actually, it shows part of the building is in the wetlands, which is not unusual, you know, given the fact that, you know, the wetlands were mapped a long time ago. So, and some encroachments taken place. But specifically, what activities are proposed within that portion of the lot?
If anything, it'd be like storage of ladders or something back there. There'd be no cars parked or anything.
Okay. Well, that would be good. I see there's a propane tank located in that area. Is the plan to keep that there?
As of right now, it's not the plan, but it's non-functioning as well. It was abandoned 15 years ago.
Okay.
That's what I was told.
So no equipment storage and no storage of any sort of supplies and no erection of any kind of shelter or anything like that?
No.
Okay. Those are my questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
One more, maybe two. Do you plan to use the state property in front of the building? I was surprised at where the line was drawn.
We proposed to put up fencing and landscaping there, and I need to talk to the highway department to see where that can go. But yeah, I mean, that would be it. If anything, it'd just be in the immediate, like where the pavement is now, parking.
Yeah, yeah. And the property to the right is separate, not owned by?
Yeah, we also own that, but we're not doing anything with it.
Not doing anything.
As of right now.
Okay, thank you. Good, thank you very much.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the application with the three recommended stipulations that Keith outlined.
Thank you, Ryan.
Second.
Thank you, Fred. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So move.
Moving on to old business. Item 6A, PZ 2205 SPA Sea Research Foundation site plan application for modifications of the Mystic Aquarium Central Courtyard, including demolition and removal of the reflection pool surrounding paved areas, walkways, and infrastructure in order to provide a more open layout and access deck property located at 55 Coogan Boulevard Mystic, Assessors Map 164, Lots, Block 3, Lots 2-1 and 2-2, Zone TC80.
Thank you, Keith. Seated tonight, once again, Ryan Deasy, Chuck Sheen, myself, Ben Filbrick, Fred Dykman, and Andy Meek. The process will be, there's a sign-up sheet, hopefully at the front of the door if anybody has any public comments for it. First, we'll hear from the applicant, then we'll have public input, in favor, opposed, or general comments, rebuttal by the applicant, staff input, board questions, and then we'll close the meeting and hopefully vote on this this evening.
And sorry, but this one isn't a public hearing. It's just a site plan application.
My bad. Thank you.
But we do have a sign-up sheet for the Affordable Housing Plan Public Hearing, which is sort of on the table back there.
I'm kind of wound up. Go ahead.
Okay. Not a problem. For the record, on behalf of the applicant, Sea Research Foundation, Sergio Trenzia, offices at 99 Mechanic Street in Pawtucket, Connecticut. I'm the, more or less the agent for the applicant. We prepared the land survey and the engineered site plans in your application. With me here this evening is David Holmes with Capital Architects, Tim Garrish with Gardner Garrish Landscape Architects, and Nathan Fage with the Sea Research Foundation. He's the senior, hold on, I always get tripped up here. He's the Senior Director of Safety and Security for the Sea Research Foundation. So I know you have a busy agenda tonight. We really appreciate that you've entertained here on our application this evening. As you know, the aquarium's under, they have a very small window to get this construction done, so this is the first step in getting their permits so that we can move forward with construction this fall. So first, Mr. Fage is going to give you a little background on the aquarium, the area of the work, and why they're pursuing this renovation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Aye.
So as you see here, this is our current conditions on the site plan. The area of work that we hope to accomplish shortly after Labor Day is focused on the west end of the property near the aquarium's main entrance. Advance this, please. So here you'll see the bounds of work will be identified in red. And the, as very eloquently stated, the real goal of the project is to simply improve accessibility and use of the existing space. Currently, if you want to advance to the next slide, currently, a good portion of this area is covered by a water feature. Oh, actually, I'll back up. So this is an aerial view of the current conditions. As you can see, it's tired, ripe for revitalization and rehabilitation, and we hope to achieve that in a handful of ways. So we'll be filling in the pool now if we can go forward. So the pool, the water feature that takes up a good portion of the area will be filled in, creating a very accessible even grade, and we'll be incorporating some sustainable building practices into this as well as enhancing the sightlines to our various exhibits so that folks exiting one building have a clear, safe, open path towards another destination, whether that be the cafe, the gift store, or even the exits in case of an emergency. So that's really all I have for the group. And with that?
Do you want to wait until the end to do questions after we have finished all the presentations?
Yeah, that might be better, sure.
Very good. So back to Sergio to introduce the rest of the project team.
Thank you. Thank you. So as Nate indicated, this is the courtyard area. I think most of you have probably been to the Mystic Aquarium, know where it's located, what's around it. I'm not going to go into those details. We know that 95 is to its north, Old Mystic Village to its west, handful of other shops. This is a very tourist and a lot of retail hotels. This is a bustling, you know, economic area in Mystic and in Stonington. This is the central courtyard. This is my very boring survey of the courtyard. When we get to Tim's plans and David's plans, it'll be a little bit more interesting. But basically, you can see that this courtyard, if those of you have visited, really emulates the back of a ship. This is that deck area with a ramp that comes up, and it's surrounded by this reflection pool, which really doesn't have much function, not really much functional space unless you want waiters and can go walking in it, which they don't allow. So the purpose of this project was to create more space, especially with COVID, but just in general, more transient space for people to walk through. You'll see a few, a little bit further on in the presentation, more places for people to rest, to sit with some seating walls. It's just going to overall this renovation as much needed to keep the aquarium up to date, new, fresh, with all types of new, you know, new aesthetic that will be more appealing for its visitors and to appeal to members. I'm just going to switch over to the proposed site plan. This one's a little bit more busy. I'll zoom in here. So the intent is to completely remove that reflection pool to cut back the ramp. You can see that the portion of the ramp that, this used to be the, excuse me, the decking area that looks like, looks like the back of a ship, has been pulled back, and this is the portion that will remain with a very welcoming and direct route up the ramp and to the facilities beyond. And so, as Nate alluded to, the concrete is weathered and torn, and it's been renovated, and a lot of it's been replaced over time. It's all a mix of colors and cracks, and so it's really time to freshen this area up, give it a new, new concrete surface. But with that, with that concrete surface, we had to address, because this is a centralized area, the drainage needs to be, was the major thing that we needed to address. So as such, being that the aquarium is very environmentally in tune, when we met to prepare the design and went through some concepts, Tim and I both agreed and the aquarium also concurred that wanted to create some more green space. They focus, you know, they're an environmentally sound and conscious institution and continue to do so. And this will not only provide the stormwater management for this site, but it'll be a nice aesthetic. These areas centralized here, this area here is a, what we would call a bio retention or a rain garden. We have a few others, another one up here, up behind the knee wall. It's underdrained because it is elevated, but it is going to be taking roof runoff, holding that water, infiltrating it, treating it, and then sending along its way. You can see these heavy dash lines are where we're collecting all these drainage areas, whether they be trench drains along here, some of these rain gardens with overflows, and I believe there's another, yeah, another small rain garden up in this area. But we're collecting all the stormwater off of these surfaces and consolidating it in these areas, letting some of it infiltrate, using evapotranspiration where the plants, plant life is going to be taking that up before it's sent off, and then it all directs into pretty much, oop. Sorry about that. Let's rotate it on me. But anyway, we can look in this direction. All discharges at this location and then heads out downstream to the, to the downstream So that being the case, these, these rain gardens or bio retention areas, they not, as I said, not only serve for stormwater management, they create a nice aesthetic, but also will provide an educational opportunity, which is also something that the aquarium embraces. That's pretty much the site layout. There are also some changes to the buildings that will be taking place around this, and that's where I'll turn it over to David so he can kind of go through some of those with you.
Mr. Chairman, my name is David Holmes. I'm one of the principals of Capital Studio Architects, and thank you for the opportunity to speak before you tonight. I'll apologize in advance if there's a small amount of overlap between our presentations. Sort of division of labor here is sort of interesting. I'll just run through the scope of work for the architectural items. The first being, we intend to remove certain existing freestanding and attached canopies. These go back to the last master plan from the mid-'90s, and the canopies were intended to do a couple things. They were actually used for wayfinding to direct guests to the specific exhibits and buildings, and at the same time, they provided weather protection from rain and snow so that guests could get from one exhibit to another without getting rained on. It's been proven over time that they didn't really work as well as they had intended. It tends to create more confusion and chaos than it does actually work for wayfinding. So we intend to remove several of those canopies, and I can show you which ones if you're interested, but, so we intend to remove the canopies that are prohibiting us now from opening up this courtyard so that when guests come from individual exhibits, it's much easier for them to find the gift shop, the cafe, the restrooms. It's just going to really clean up the space and make it much simpler for guests to navigate their way around the campus. The canopies that will remain will be treated with a coat of paint, get gutters and leaders where they currently don't have them, and the addition of snow breaks, snow and ice breaks, which they currently don't have and are desperately needed in some instances. As Sergio said, that reflecting pool, which is around what was at one time a ship, if you remember when the Institute for Exploration was part of the aquarium when Dr. Ballard was associated, that actually was the back of a ship deck that was in water, and it had the Turtle, which was a submersible vehicle that they used to discover undersea sunken ships and all other things. The Turtle is long gone. The ship has been reworked, so it doesn't look like a ship anymore. We're going to cut it back to the platform as Sergio indicated and put a new elegant, simpler ramp to get from the courtyard to what is now the Ocean Conservation Center. Over at the existing building, if you could show that with his, maybe go to the slide with the color elevation. So if we go back to the original building from 1973, the building was built out of what we call battered precast concrete, which was all the rage in 1973. In 2022, not so much. It clearly looks dated and clearly is in need of an upgrade and a facelift. So what we intend to do for the area in the center that's sort of modeled with blue, gray, and white flecks is to take and fur out in front of the original battered concrete with a metal stud wall, zip sheathing, and apply these interlocking aluminum shingle system. We've used it before at a couple locations, particularly Goodwin University up in East Hartford. It's a really interesting material. It's got a million different applications, and it's going to add some color and some movement to that whole courtyard space, so we're excited about that. To the left of that, you may remember that there's some second floor office space, which again was part of the Institute for Exploration, that was added for Dr. Ballard when he was associated with the institution. And that, is it possible to go in the photo?
Yeah.
That's what we call a sawtooth, yup, right there. It's that sloped, canted, sawtooth curtain wall. We added that back in, I think it was 2002. And the Ocean Exploration Center, which is to the left of that photo, which looks like sort of a blue rolling wave, the idea was that that faceted slope curtain wall was like a rocky outcropping that the wave was hitting. It's sort of interesting, but it's time to go back and revisit it and find a more efficient way to use the space. So what our intention is, is to take in footprint that second floor office, which is a sawtooth, and straighten it out and put a very simple, vertical silicone caulked curtain wall system in its place. It'll add, last time I did the calculation, I think it's less than 25 square feet total to the footprint of the building, which in architecture, in terms of occupant load, is less than one person. But if, can you maybe go back to the, please? But what it's just really going to do is, again, it's going to try and eliminate some of what people perceive to be some chaos in that space. We're trying to simplify it, so just a straight, the color isn't particularly good in this slide, it really would be a gray, but it would just be a simple, straight glass wall with silicone glazing, no mullions exposed or anything like that, where the focus now would be on the new, what we call fish scale wall, which is right in the center of that elevation. And then lastly, at the Ocean Planet Pavilion, which is the main entrance, it's, obviously we're into the building, where the sort of curved steel trusses are, they have two ticket booths there. Yup, thank you, Sergio. There's two ticket booths there. And the ticket booths aren't actually being used like they were because everybody's buying their tickets electronically, and they get there and it's already on their phone, and the ticket booths really are sort of horse and buggy thinking these days. So for several different reasons, not the least of which, we need to get some construction equipment into the courtyard, and getting the construction equipment into the courtyard is a challenge. We're limited by the spacing of the concrete columns that support that Ocean Planet Pavilion. So we're going to remove one of the ticket booths, terminate the power and the electric. It's got an elevated slab, we're going to remove the elevated slab, and during the construction period, that'll be access for the construction equipment to get in and out of the courtyard. Once the construction activity is complete, we're going to put behind the two closest concrete columns, a roll-up grill that whenever the institute is open for business, this coil-up grill will be coiled up, and you won't see it at all. So it would basically be just a wide open space. I don't have an elevation to show you, but we're basically removing the ticket booth, and all you're going to see is the two concrete columns that remain. When the institute's closed, the coil gate will come down and lock and be safe and secure. And that basically concludes the list of architectural items that are included in the application. We'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Next, Tim Garrish, going to come up and give you a little bit of background on the more exciting portions of this, the landscape design.
For the record, Tim Garrish, Gardner Garrish Landscape Architects, Providence, Rhode Island. You've heard a lot about why, how, architecture, et cetera. I think the best thing I'm going to do is show you some quick images and talk about some of the particular things that I've been focusing on. So first image, as you know, right from, looking from the front entry, that's the existing. I'll agree with chaos and clarity, right? So a more proposed view, which shows some concrete banding. We're reusing benches and picnic tables and establishing some shade sails, which frame the entry, frame the axis of view of the Ocean Conservation Center, and also creates space for the rain gardens. I'm kind of focusing in closer on this, where you can see the detail, a little more detail conceptually of what the seat walls are. Obviously, about 18 inches, poured concrete with some staining, some texture to them so they're not slippery. Even the base of the shade sails will have a concrete, faux-concrete texture to them, mimicking what's at the Beluga exhibit, so there's some more cohesion and architecture theme throughout the aquarium. And as David and Sergio were talking about, entrance and clarity, this is the view looking towards the Marine Theater, so you can see the existing canopy that's going to be removed, and again, a lot of canopies, shades over individual picnic tables. We're proposing to open that up and have shade under picnic tables with shade sails and a clearer view of the entrance to the Marine Theater. Right now, people Right now, people come in, they go to the Beluga, because to the left is very clear confusion. So this will open it up, and it'll provide people opportunities. They'll say, gee, I could go over here, go straight, whatever. And the last view looking fr, sorry, the last view looking back towards the Ocean Planet Pavilion, the front entry, right now, again, a lot of pillars, you have the ramp walkway over the reflection water, opening that up, again, creating more seating space, seating space for smaller groups, larger groups, and then, of course, better sightlines, so that people can see where the restroom is. As part of that, we have three sections or segments of shade sails, the A, which again is the segments of a couple different heights and elevations. They start usually lower along the sides, along the wall, maybe eight, 10, 12 feet, and then when they move towards the middle, they're flaring up, so they're getting into 10, 12, 14 feet. Same with B, you can see some of the elevations, 12, 14 feet. And then C is in the middle, we didn't want to block sightlines, so we have two shade sails there, overlapping, interlapping, and then you're getting to 12, 14, and 16 feet, so they're much open and grander. Quick shade sails colors, the top and the bottom, excuse me, the two on the top are the two overlapping colors, the lighter color on the left, the green is on top, and then we're playing with different colors for the shade columns, because we have a lot of column, existing columns to work with, but we're probably going to do a metallic silver, dune kind of silvery color, and that's going to carry through the paint of the existing columns as well. Landscape plant, of course, which you have not heard about, is a mix of mostly native and naturalized plants, heavy on evergreens because of the environment, a lot of low-growing, and a lot of plants that, of course, are sensitive to children, we don't want to create any issues. We're also trying to minimize bird operations, because they like to hang out in the Ocean Conservation Center, which creates maintenance issues. And this list is also going to be reviewed by, of course, the aquarium staff because of possible issues with the creatures that live there. Quick, a quick plan view that shows the green areas that we are creating within that area. Some of them are, of course, rain gardens, all the water is getting as much surface water as draining into these rain gardens as we can. And the plants themselves, seasonal bloom, there's spring, summer, fall, you know, the bottom, on the bottom left is the plants that are framing the Ocean Conservation Center. You'll even have a witch hazel, which is flowering, approximately now you'll have seen out there with the yellow flowers against the blue. Christmas cactus, which is green all year round, Lakothaway, so heavy on the evergreens, and then seasonal flowers, which are going May, June, July, August, throughout the summer months when the aquarium is very popular. The rain gardens themselves, the image, if you can see my cursor, where's the cursor? It's right there, right, it doesn't show up on there. Yeah, the second, the second image on the right, which looks like grass, is a bunch of sedge, sedges have edges, and the rain gardens are a mass of sedges, and with a little ostrich fern on the lower left-hand side in the shaded areas. And of course, some details of the rain gardens, I mean, excuse me, the trench grates will have a heel-proof, doesn't show up, will have a heel-proof, and ADA accessible, of course, great. We're working on final sizing on that one, and I guess in the last section, which shows some of the relationship with the heights and people and visitors in the rain garden. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. There's going to be seating underneath the sails?
Yes.
Have you thought about how the drainage happens when it rains with the seating underneath the sails?
Yes, absolutely, yes. The shade sails are, they will drip lightly, I'm told, but during a rain event, the majority, the vast majority of the water sheets off, right?
But there's no picnic table underneath that sheeting as well?
No, 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 and I tried to show that, and again, working with the sun angles where we are in the hemisphere, in the earth, that we're trying to keep the shade sails more off to the south side, and so that even you can see on the upper right, that the picnic tables are actually off on the, just beyond them, just to the north.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question, just out of curiosity, is there any change or addition to lighting going on under the sails or around that area?
We are going to uplight from underneath the shade sails, and we've got safety and security lighting, that's been kind of enhancing what we have now. And in each shade bowl, but most of the shade columns are going to have electrical outlet and there's kind of data corrections as well.
Okay.
Yeah, we, to answer further your question, we had a photometric plan generated, just we didn't get it in in time for this application, but, you know, as typical, this is also a centralized area, we want to see it from really anywhere else, but we still.
Most of the light will be shining downward.
All those lights, yeah, there will be some light, light upward lighting, just to accent the shade sails, but nothing that's going to be, you know, very bright, I believe, that's going to be shooting up into the sky. Yeah, there's no spotlights that are going to, or the gravitators in the back, but we have a photometric plan that identifies that the light should, in this area, you know, typical, the forecast is dissipating as we get out of the, out of this area. Just enough for safety and security. Most of the activities are taking place during the day, so a lot of the lighting won't even need to be on at night unless there's an event or something. And to that point, this has offers, I know you're talking about picnic tables and chairs and things, this offers a very flexible space, where tables won't be nailed to the ground or bolted to the ground, and things can be moved around, and flexible for events or whatever's going on in the environment that day.
Thank you. Chuck?
Just a couple of quick questions. First of all, I appreciate the improvement and the architect's very clear description on the chaos that takes place on getting into this exhibit. I'm assuming, and this is more for the record, because it's got to be this way, but I want to understand that the improvements that eliminate chaos on access also eliminate chaos on egress from the building.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, so with regard to the rain gardens, and again, I always applaud bioremediation of stormwater, and the treatment of stormwater before it exits the site, and that's what this will do, but to what extent will there be ponding in the, within the rain gardens?
The intention is to keep a minimal amount of water, especially the rain garden to the north side where the Marine Theater, it's almost more of an exhibition or an exhibit of rain garden in that situation. There is plus or minus six inches of water ponding, currently with the drainage outlet as it is designed, and same with the two rain gardens that are along the Ocean Conservation Center. They're taking surface water, they're fairly small, and again, it's about six inches. The center courtyard rain garden, I'll pass to Sergio, because that's taking the larger volume of water, and I think it's about a foot of elevation, possible ponding.
I guess the question is only, was it modeled?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. If it was modeled, and it went through an input-output model, and you understand that, you know, what the discharges are, and that it doesn't create any downstream impacts, I think you mentioned that it's discharged to a pipe to the west, and that has the capacity to take, because you're eliminating, you're increasing the impervious area, and that's going to increase the discharge, but does the storage mitigate the change in impervious area?
Right. We are restricted in this area because of what we have to work with. This is an isolated area, there's no way for it to overflow in on there anywhere else. So it had, that outlet pipe, is it, you are correct. Town engineer has provided us some comment, he wanted to see a hydraulic gradient line to identify what the, you know, what kind of ponding we would see. I believe we've modeled it through a 10-year or possibly 25-year, I'd have to check the report, just to refresh my memory on that. You know, we're not going to be able to mitigate 100-year storm in this area, but yeah, there will be some ponding in those rain gardens, they have, they have been sized, the overflows have been sized, where we're going to be restricted, as you've identified, is the outlet pipe. But more or less, we're creating, we're balancing the landscaped areas and the rain garden areas with what we're adding in impervious, because that reflection pool did take water and hold it. And what that, where that water would go, once it hit a certain elevation, would actually would go through a filtration system, and the backwater discharge would go into the sewer system. So we're actually taking water out of the sanitary.
The WPCA would be happy.
Yeah, Doug's delighted that we're taking water out of the sewer system, because that water was treated and minor amounts of that, and we're just letting it run off now in stormwater. But one of the comments from the town engineer was to provide him with a little more detail on that. If we find that there is an issue with the discharge location and it can't handle it, we are going to have to look downstream and upgrading as well.
Okay. With regard to that, is if it, let's assume in a 100-year storm, you know, it does flood greater, is there a relief that, an outflow where the water can get out of that area before it floods a building?
There really is not, we're designed, they designed this area into a corner, and there are the thresholds there, that if the drains do not do their job, it very well could go into the building.
I think it's important that you look at a 100-year storm.
Yep.
Last question, since it will, the rain gardens, again, which I partly endorse because of the bioremedial effect that they have on water quality, stormwater quality, but are the plants, are the plants designed to sustain inundation?
Yes, absolutely.
They are?
Yes.
Okay, and the seasonal changes that we get up here?
Yes.
Because the rain gardens that work well, the plants are selected for inundation and also the season effect?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, they need to be actually more shore plants, where they get inundated and then they dry as well, because there'll be a period of time, we will have irrigation, but there'll be a period of time where it could be dry and there's no water, so it's a combination, more of a shelf edge species.
Thank you. And the drawings by the architect and the landscaper architect and the civil engineer were helpful in understanding the changes that are taking place there, thank you.
And I will add, if you would like to stipulate upon, the town engineer does have comments that he has made.
I saw them.
So if you would like to, in addition to that, to look at 100-year storm, we'd be happy to do so as well.
Just to analyze the effects of the 100-year storm, to make sure that everybody understands what's going to, what's going to take place there, that's all, because there is no, you know, like when you design a detention basin, you always take a look at 100-year storm, and you always take a look at how a detention basin relieves itself in a, you know, 1% probability storm, so we should look at that here also.
Thank you.
Thank you, great presentation.
With that, I know you have other business to get to, I do just in closing, and once again, thank the commission for indulging us this evening to hear this, given our schedule. I will add that Carlin Construction is likely going to be, we've been working with them all along on the design, and they're bringing up very real construction concerns as we go through the process, and we've been at this for, I think, the better part of six months in preparation of getting in front of you this evening, so I hope that shows. We can say that we put a lot of work and thought, weekly to bi-weekly meetings, to make sure that this is going to be something that the Mystic Aquarium is going to be very proud of, and as well as something a community asset and amenity, and an improvement as such, and we don't anticipate, you know, we hopefully to be successful in obtaining, you know, more memberships and more people coming to the aquarium, but I did want to may point out that this by no, it's not anticipated that this is going to impact any types of traffic or parking issues or anything like that, where we're still well within the zoning requirements with respect to those items. But we do hope that it's an improvement for ADA accessibility, visual, eliminating that chaos, and making a very, a much better and usable space, so we appreciate your attention this evening, if there's any other questions, please let us know.
Are there any other questions?
Mine recovered.
Do you have a question?
No, mine recovered, I said.
Okay.
How much space are you gaining by losing the retaining and?
I'm not sure, Tim, do you know how much space we're gaining by taking, by taking out the reflection pool?
And then replacing it with planted and just kind of hard surface.
Yeah.
I think the pool itself was 4,500 square feet, and I think we've got about 1,850 square meters in the landscape area without, I'm going to make a lot of numbers.
Yeah, it is a pretty significant addition. See if I can bring up the plan for reference. So, I mean, this is the existing survey, and the pool is this stipple area here, and that's, that's all going away and either becoming landscape or usable, usable space, as well as, we mentioned, these canopies, these hatched areas here, a lot of these canopies are going to be taken down, and it's really just going to open up this space. So I'd have to run a calculation, I don't, I don't know off the top of my head, but I think Tim has provided some square footage.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have questions?
For reference, this landing is about 1,200 square feet, so two or three times that size, so yeah, I think it's.
Good chunk.
Yeah.
Thank you, Sergio. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the application to Sea Research Foundation as submitted, with the recommended stipulations, that prior to the issuance of the zoning permit, final plans will be signed by the commission and recorded, and the final plans be reviewed to the satisfaction of the town engineer. I don't think we have to stipulate anything about 100-year storm, I trust that the town engineer will ask all those same questions.
Second motion.
Thank you, Ryan. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Still carried?
Thank you. Look with the rest of your evening.
I was reminded by the fire marshal to explain, we have three exits this evening that are wide open. One doorway over here, one over in front of me, behind you, and one to your left. Thank you. Keith, what's next?
So, one second.
So before Dr. Pollan begins, I'll give my public hearing.
Here you go.
Speech that applies to this hearing. Seated tonight, we have Ryan Deasy, Chuck Sheehan, myself, Ben Filbrick, Fred Dykman, and Andy Meek, and we have two alternates with us. The process will be that we have a sign-up sheet for those who have comments at the front entryway. The applicant will, in this case, the town and Dr. Pollan will have their time and space, and Dr. Pollan has agreed to answer questions at the end of his presentation, if they could be filtered through myself first, please. He'll hear them, I won't have to reread them, but I just want to screen them a little bit, perhaps. Then the public will have input, in favor, opposed, general comments, we'll have rebuttal, and then we'll have staff input, board questions, and we'll close the hearing, and the commission will have discussion. I doubt we will be voting tonight, so please don't get your expectations up for a vote this evening. I like my sleep as well as everybody else, so around 11, 11:30, I think we may call it a night. Lastly, I do have some just housekeeping rules, is please keep your comments on topic rather than global issues that really cannot be solved this evening or by this town. Please keep your comments specific to the draft in front of us, and if your comment is similar to a previous speaker's, please just endorse that previous speaker instead of taking up your other community members' times. That would be very polite, and I would appreciate that. Let's see, depending on the number of speakers, I would probably limit to three minutes Depending on the number of speakers, I would probably limit to three minutes per person, which is a typical timeframe. I would like everybody to know that this draft is editable and we plan on editing it over the next week or two. And one last item, two last items. Please do not applaud after speakers. We're just going to keep this moving along and applause just don't necessarily apply here. And lastly, let's just keep this civil. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, my name is Susan Cullen. I'm the Director of Economic and Community Development for the Town of Stonington. And I'm here tonight to give you a little bit of an introduction and history of how we got to this moment, and then I'll introduce our featured speaker, Dr. Donald Pollan. This past weekend, I saw a great quote that seemed very relevant to today's hearing. "Volunteering is the ultimate exercise in democracy. You vote in elections once a year, but when you volunteer, you vote every day about the kind of community you want to live in." We are all here tonight because of the deep love we have for our town. Because of these issues are ones that many of us are passionate about, it may be difficult to discuss them in a calm and civil manner. I invite you tonight to engage in a constructive dialogue where we treat each other with dignity, respect, kindness, compassion, and civility, as we share varying perspectives with a goal of creating a culture of inclusion and belonging. First, a bit of history about how this plan came about. In 2006, the Affordable Housing Committee report was drafted with the consultant plan of metrics, and the forum utilized was the Affordable Housing Committee. It was never adopted. In 2015, the Plan of Conservation and Development recognized the need to establish an affordable housing plan and assigned the task to the Affordable Housing Committee. The committee subsequently dissolved itself in 2016. At the Plan of Conservation and Development Implementation Committee, the task was then reassigned to the Economic Development Commission. In May of 2020, on my first job, on my first day on the job here in Stonington, Keith Brines, the current town planner, and myself, applied for a grant of $15,000 to the state of Connecticut to hire a consultant to write the town's affordable housing plan. The grant was awarded on July 15, 2020, and the town posted a request for proposals. We reviewed the proposals, held interviews, and eventually hired Dr. Donald Pollan from Goman and York to write the plan. The Economic Development Commission held open meetings with Dr. Pollan to discuss specific tasks with the public on October 27, 2020, November 19, 2020, and December 17, 2020. The Town of Stonington held community conversations in February of 2021 and on June 17, 2021, to further engage the public for input for this plan. The plan was then drafted on June 21, 2021. Subsequent to that draft, other town meetings, such as the Exit 90 Community Conversation, were held. Surveys have yielded additional input that has not yet been considered in the plan. The town also held a vote that failed on a fixed tax assessment for the Campbell Grain Building. The department has also received multiple emailed comments regarding the plan. So during this hearing, all of that public input submitted will be included in the Planning and Zoning Commission's consideration of the plan. Your task will be to consider the process as a whole and then evaluate the recommendations in the plan as valid ones or not. You will consider thoughtfully the input of all the members of the public and incorporate the outcomes of the public hearing into the final plan that is required to be adopted by the town prior to June 2022. Now, you might wonder why we're doing this now. What is State Statute 830J and what does it mean for the town? It means that effectively, on July 24, 2017, the legislation put into place said that every municipality in the state is required to prepare an affordable housing plan. And we have to update it at least once every five years, starting in June 2022. The plan must specify how the municipality intends to increase the number of affordable housing units within their municipality. The municipality may hold informational meetings, organize activities to inform residents about the plan process, and also must provide at least 35 days' notice for a public hearing on adoption of the plan and must make that draft plan available to the public prior to the hearing. Following its adoption, the municipality must regularly review and maintain their plan. It's not intended as a set of requirements that the towns must adhere to, but rather as a helpful tool to assist municipalities in their local efforts to create meaningful and effective local affordable housing plans. Now, what defines that word "affordable"? Affordable is defined as the fact that a household now pays 30% or less of their gross income for housing costs. For example, the median income currently in Stonington is $79,250. This would mean that an affordable housing cost for a studio apartment would be $648 per month, or $1,621 a month for a four-bedroom unit. The current average rent that I looked up today in Stonington is $2,044. Now, why do we need this? In 1900, the average household size was 4.76. In 1950, it was 3.37. And today, in Stonington, the average household size is 2.12. Part of our concern is that the type of housing currently available in Stonington may not be relevant to today's household size. This plant is meant to be the tools in the toolbox to direct the way that affordable housing may be achieved in Stonington. In December of 2020, the Connecticut Department of Housing put out a guidebook to assist municipalities in the development of their plans. And in the guidebook, it states, "But the truth is that affordable housing is an investment in our communities. It's the catalyst for better jobs, talent retention, health, well-being, and quality of life in Connecticut. Young people can't afford to live in the town that they grew up in, and older people can't afford to retire and stay." This reminds me of the influential position taken by 18th-century philosopher Immanuel Kant, who said that each person in the world was deserving of equal worth and equal respect. He said that to be a good and moral person, all actions one takes should be for the greater good. Let's work together tonight to build some consensus. We're looking to hear from you regarding specific ideas and principles you think are important to be included in our plan. We want your input. Now, it's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Donald Pollan, AICP. Dr. Pollan is an urban geographer and a professional planner with 27 years of experience. He's accepted as an expert witness in multiple courts across the country. He's done work in 19 states and over 150 local cities and towns. He's the past president of the Connecticut Chapter of the American Planning Association and currently serves on the Municipal Affordable Housing Plans Work Group established by our Connecticut Legislature. Dr. Pollan.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. I thought it was quite fitting that you announced the emergency exits between the last application, and now I assume you were providing me with an escape route. So. With that said, I'm here tonight before you to once again present this plan to you. If you remember, I believe I was before you last fall with a very similar presentation as to the one I'm giving tonight. There has been a few tweaks to it in light of recognizing some of the concerns that have been raised in recent weeks related to this plan, a few things I want to highlight and focus in on. So this presentation's going to really go through the plan in the order that the plan is presented, touching on most of the sections that are included within the plan. There are some sections here that I'm going to pass through quickly because I'd like to spend more time on the policy recommendations than some of the background information. One of the things I want to touch on first, playing off of Susan's presentation, when she was talking about the differences in household sizes, a statistic I like to use with communities when discussing housing is in 1960 America, only 13% of households were single-person. Today, 28% of households in America are single-person. If you look at renter households, the number, depending on which community and where, gets up anywhere between 45 and 56%. My point in that is in the context of affordability. I used to have a group of friends I referred to as my married friends. It was four married couples and myself. And whenever we'd go out and do things, even though we all individually earned similar incomes, I realized that I was income challenged compared to them because their incomes were dual. So the restaurants we chose, the vacation places we went and so forth, it was always a bit of a burden for myself. My point in that is we have a housing stock that was built for families and a housing stock built for past generations. And today's generations and today's demographic structure does not mirror our past generations and our past housing stock. So a single person, 28% of the households in today's world, is trying to afford housing that was built more likely for dual-income households. So I think that provides some perspective of some of the challenges we're confronted with. I apologize if yet to find a town with a screen big enough to actually adequately display the words as far as size goes. But why affordable housing now? And I'm going to spend a little time on this slide and with some material enough on this slide to kind of provide some context here. The fact is, this challenge of affordable housing isn't new. The crisis of affordable housing in America has increased, but Connecticut realized we had an affordable housing issue back over 30 years ago, and that was with the passage of 8-30G. I recognize 8-30G is controversial. That's the Affordable Housing Appeals Act. And I've been a person that has testified multiple times as to the flaws within that legislation and why that legislation has essentially underperformed and also upset a lot of communities. That being said, it is the law and it is what we are confronted with. What I think's also important is that around the same time that 8-30G was passed, 8-2 and 8-23, 8-2 is the zoning laws, and 8-23 is the Plan of Conservation and Development, those areas of statute were also amended. And they require that we make provisions for the development of housing opportunities, including opportunities for multifamily dwellings for all residents of the municipality and the planning region. All is imperative there. And then to promote housing choice and economic diversity in housing, including housing for both low and moderate-income households. There's actually been state case law on these provisions that has clarified that even though it says things like "promote" or "make provisions," that it is directive, that the municipality must do these things. Now, I'm not saying this is Stonington. I actually don't know. I can't remember from when I last read your POCD. But I work in communities all across the state, and I can tell you time and time again, A, in the intro sections of POCDs in local municipalities where they lay out what the POCD is supposed to do, these lines are often excluded. They don't even include them in the kind of context of what the POCD is supposed to address. That sends a sign to me that there's this aversion to affordable housing. When you then read POCDs across the state, you also find that the policies and discussions around housing are, A, the discussions are very light on affordability historically, and the recommendations are often nonexistent related to affordability. So while we may not like 8-30G, the fact is, we collectively as a state, as municipalities, as myself, as a planner with 27 years' experience, almost the life of 8-30G, we've actually failed to plan for affordable housing. Hence, 2017 and the passage of Public Act 17170. It said municipalities now have to create an affordable housing plan every five years. Basically, the legislature said, "You haven't been doing it, even though you've been told to, and now we're going to reiterate that you have to do it. This is mandatory. No more sidestepping it through the POCD." 8-30G was designed to provide affordable housing. Approximately 6,500 units over the past 30 years have been created through 8-30G-related applications. We can say that's a success. We could also claim it's a failure. At the end of the day, it is what it is. And the fact was, it was the threat of 8-30G that was supposed to get us to plan better. And in context, since 1990, about 235,000 homes have been built in Connecticut. If just 10% of those were planned for as affordable, that would give us 23,500 affordable housing units that we currently don't have versus the 6,500 that 8-30G created. In Stonington, 2,118 housing units have been constructed since 1990. At 10% of that, you guys would have 211 more housing units, affordable housing units qualified than you do now. Your 5.93 or 73% today of qualified affordable units under the Act would be 7-point-something. If it was 20% that were affordable, you'd be at 9.7. You'd be right on the cusp of crossing that 10% threshold. That being said, that 10% threshold is arbitrary and capricious, and it pains me that the legislature just set a random number. It doesn't make sense, and it puts many communities in a position that they can't achieve it. While many are upset over affordable housing, 8-30G, and recent changes to the zoning legislation that are mandating accessory dwelling units, that are now creating debates around accessory dwelling units, or that the legislation made it explicitly illegal to set minimum unit sizes. Just to be clear, there was a Supreme Court case out of East Hampton, Connecticut, my hometown, in the 1990s, that made it clear that minimum unit sizes was illegal. We shouldn't have them in our zoning regulations, but we still did. So the legislature said, "No more. It's over. It's done. They have to go." For me, the interesting thing is though, that while everyone discusses these things that are tangible in these changes, we've missed what is actually probably the biggest change in 8-2 out of that last legislative session last year. And that's the last bullet, last two bullets on this page here. That 8-30G, 8-2, the zoning regulation-enabling legislation, says that zoning must now address significant disparities in housing need and access to educational, occupational, and other opportunities. It's later followed by a new provision that says zoning shall affirmatively further the purpose of federal fair housing, the Federal Fair Housing Act. This is a huge change, and it's something we all need to be aware of. So historically, it has been possible to take claims against zoning for the violation of fair housing. I was involved in cases in Louisiana that were both disparate impact claims and fair housing claims. I was on the side of the municipality as an expert. They lost. They paid multimillion dollars in penalties and fines related to that. The requirement to, so what does affirmatively forward, further fair housing actually mean? It means recipients of federal financial assistance, every municipality receives federal financial assistance, need to do more than simply not discriminate. They must take meaningful actions to overcome patterns of segregation and foster inclusive Historically, it would have been very difficult in this scenario. So right now, most communities, their zoning regulations allow single-family homes as of right and multifamily homes via special permit. Historically, it would have been difficult to make a claim that that was a fair housing violation. Cases I was involved in in Louisiana were disparate impacts and said that proved that at the metropolitan region, more African-Americans lived in rental housing- at the metropolitan region, more African Americans lived in rental housing than single-family housing and therefore those zoning provisions created a disparate impact on that population. And therefore, that was a violation of fair housing. And those were the cases that were lost and the municipality paid dearly. My point being now that this specific language is in eight dash two that says we must further the purposes of fair housing, now make this much easier. The fact is, things that weren't, that were iffy and hard to claim were, were not so easy to prove and so forth, now are. And it's that sentence before that says disparities, that's referencing disparate impact claims in housing needs and access to educational, occupational and other opportunities. Differences in qualities of school systems across municipalities, educational. All of this ties together that from my perspective creates a new day and a new playing field in the zoning world, that the status quo that we have done for so long isn't so much status quo anymore, that simple things we are used to, site plan approval for a single-family subdivision and special permit for multifamily development, may not be that cut and dry anymore. So with that as kind of laying this framework, uh, I want to continue through this presentation. I'm actually not going to go over this slide. It's how we got here tonight and Susan did a really good job of explaining that. But in doing this, I want to thank the Economic Development Commission for their engagement in their process, their, this process, for running the process and for the input they had and other members of the public had. The fact is, eight dash thirty J does not provide any guidance as to how to create this plan. Says municipalities must create an affordable housing plan every five years. Municipality. Doesn't say what agency, what board, what entity. It actually doesn't even require a public hearing on adoption of the plan. It says if you choose to have a public hearing, then this is the process you have to follow. So under the statutory authority, any entity of the municipality could have been placed in charge of creating this plan. Uh, it's not limited to any entity based on their directive or so forth. I just testified or presented before the Affordable Housing Committee uh related to eight dash thirty J and how to make improvements to it going forward on the fact that there is a lack of guidance in this statutory authority on how to create this plan. At the end of the day, my belief is it's a land use plan and the authority belongs here and I'm happy you guys are doing the uh, doing the public hearing and the adoption on this document. So moving on, just quickly in the context of planning, because I know concerns have been raised about planning. For me, what planning is, and this comes directly from slides I use with my students, it's a process of preparing for the future. It's a strategy for improvement. It's a systematic approach to problem solving, often problems of the past. It's a strategic process of decision making. It's a continuous process of learning and adjustments and it's a prediction of the future with the risk of being wrong. And that is, things change. If we were creating a plan in two thousand seven, all the trend lines would be going up and then everything crashed in two thousand eight. There's a risk of being wrong that's always inherently there, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't plan. On the right-hand side, I show those arrows, decision-making without the planning, without planning, becomes arbitrary and capricious. It's just, you know, just make a decision, we're all going in the wrong direction. As planners, we like to use the word consensus. I actually don't like the word because we'll never come to a consensus. No one in the, not all of us are going to agree on what's best in this plan. But the hope is it can get us at least heading in a similar direction. Which brings me to the key point is plans are not binding in Connecticut. By adopting a plan does not bind you to do what's within the plan. It is a policy recommendation and a guide. In addition, most, nor is it a code or ordinance. You're not adopting a zoning reg that says you have to do this. You're just adopting a policy that says when updating your zoning regs, you should consider doing this. And planning should always precede zoning. Uh, and we even have federal Supreme Court cases on that. Uh, with that said, at the end of the day, most of the policy recommendations in this plan, whether there are amendments to the zoning regulations or whether there are things like a housing trust fund or tax abatements or tax increment financing, all of those things require legislative action, either by this commission or by the selectmen and therefore require public hearings and therefore require further public input. So none of those recommendations, if this plan is adopted, can proceed uh without a further public process on the specific provision that's being considered. So when we're talking about affordable housing, what are we talking about? Uh, there's so many definitions and so many ways of approaching it uh that in some ways it becomes confusing and overwhelming. Uh, the State Department of Housing has twenty-four different programs related to housing affordability and they all have different types of requirements related to income. Uh, there's no set standard. However, HUD provides us with a standard that basically says if households are spending more than thirty percent of their income on housing, that is rent and/or mortgage plus utilities, taxes, homeowner's insurance and so forth, then housing is unaffordable. More specifically, in the land use world, when we talk about affordable housing, we're talking about how it's specifically defined in eight dash thirty G, this idea of qualified affordable housing that is either housing that is uh, comes through a housing program from the state or feds uh for, you know, lower income households. That could be voucher programs, that could be low income housing tax credits and so forth, or it's specifically deed restricted housing units, typically those approved through eight dash thirty G uh that are set to sell or rent at uh eighty percent AMI or less. And your current housing stock, five point nine three percent of the housing stock qualifies under the definition of eight dash thirty G. And for those who don't know, eight dash thirty G also says you need more than ten percent in order to not be subject to eight dash thirty G, which eight dash thirty G essentially allows uh for a developer to come forward with a zoning application and provided they provide more, uh thirty percent of the housing units at eighty percent and sixty percent AMI, they can circumvent most of the zoning regulations uh to get the densities and other uh development elements that they need to make the development work. So why affordable housing? At the end of the day, quality affordable housing provides social and economic stability for households, families and communities. I like to use the phrase, housing is where jobs go at night. We often don't think of it that way, but there's a symbiotic relationship between housing and jobs. And the fact is, if you talk to the economic development professionals, whether it be here in Connecticut or in other places in the country where housing is unaffordable, it creates a significant challenge in actually retaining and attracting jobs. When your workforce can't find affordable housing, then it becomes difficult to retain and attract them. Fairfield County especially has experienced this in the sense that public servants, town planners, school teachers, uh, police officers, firefighters can't afford to live in Fairfield County, even though that's where they work. So affordable housing is very much needed uh in the sense of, you know, maintaining resilient communities. In the world of planning, we like to talk a lot about sustainability. And once again, I'm not just saying this to you. I say this regularly before communities. If I look at the plan, the conservation development, most times it uses the words sustainability someplace. Most often, it cites the Brunden Commission, the United Nations Commission nineteen eighty-seven definition on sustainability, which reads as development meets the needs of the present without uh compromising the ability of future generations to meet their own needs. Unfortunately, that's where it often stops. It's the next sentence that I find important. It says, doing so must integrate and balance economic, environmental and social goals. Within the world of land use planning, both the P O C D, zoning, wetlands regulations and so forth, uh, we have privileged the environment from a sustainable perspective over the social and economic, that environmental concerns related to development uh get far greater attention in real estate number of pages within a plan than do the social and economic challenges. Uh, and therefore, I like to make the point that it's extremely important that we find a way to strike a balance. It's not easy. It's definitely not easy, uh, but it's needed and I'll come back to that. The plan and the, the Economic Development Commission and the plan ultimately put forth these aspirational values and also this kind of who we strive to be. In summary, it's Stonington as a bucolic village, you know, seaside village that is a welcoming community. But I think most profound in this is the idea that everyone who can afford to work in Stonington should be able to afford to live in Stonington. And I think that's true of any community. It's not just Stonington. The plan ultimately focused on targeting investment and this is something I've used myself for approximately twenty years now, since I ran a hu- hu- housing program. And in most communities where I do work, whether it be economic development or housing, it's usually around this idea of targeting, finding those areas that are best suited for what it is you want to do and what it is you want to achieve. I know there has been some concerns that, you know, Pawtucket has maybe been put upon too much with affordability, but at the end of the day, it wasn't, you know, held out on its own. We looked at four specific areas of the community, the Mystic Village, the Pawtucket Village, primarily is the two key areas serviced by public water and public sewer that have the infrastructure to support density. Uh, that doesn't mean you couldn't actually, you know, find ways to create affordable housing in non-sewered areas. The public health code, I believe, allows up to sixteen bathrooms on a single septic system before it becomes a community system. And I've seen proposals that have looked at, you know, three, four, five-unit buildings on well and septic systems and they can work within the health code. But at the end of the day, the areas most likely are those served by infrastructure. Number two is we looked at exit ninety, if I get that right. Yes, I always get it wrong. I say ninety-one. Uh, we looked at exit ninety as kind of a gateway into the community in an area, and I say this kindly, you know, it's just a matter of fact, it's not a criticism, but an area has, that has a lot of older marginal properties that could benefit for reinvestment, redevelopment and so forth. And therefore, if you think about some of those older dated, somewhat rundown hotels and so forth, uh, mixed use redevelopment of them with housing and commercial uses may be suitable. So this area was viewed as an area that could be, an area that could handle some density in housing. And right near it, you have Riverdale Farms, not Riverdale Farms, I'm sorry, Perkins Farms. Riverdale's in Avon, my apologies. Uh, and we also looked at exit ninety-two as an area that has public infrastructure and doesn't have a lot of development, so it has developable land and we saw that as another opportunity area. Also important in those two exit areas is the fact that their accessibility to the interstate highway system and therefore providing accessibility to the greater job market. In the plan, we also focused a bit upon the impact of housing, new housing development on existing housing. And this is due to, it's a continual issue that comes up whenever we discuss housing development before land use commissions, that there's this idea that the sky is falling and it's going to be de- devalue existing properties. There's twenty years of research, uh, academic and industry into the impacts of new housing development on neighboring and proximate uh properties. And the fact is, the overwhelming majority shows even with affordable housing, there is no negative impact on neighboring properties. In most cases, neighboring properties actually see an increase in property value over time. Uh, where the, where there is research, uh, there's really no negative research that shows the opposite, a negative impact. There is some research that shows no findings whatsoever, couldn't determine whether or not there was an impact or not. And we felt that was important to call out in the context of the challenges of getting housing development approved. Also, and this is my return to sustainability, is we confronted head-on uh this issue of sustainability and the privileging of the environment over the social and economic. And while I know this has upset uh some people and feel that this is a statement against, you know, the environment and the coastal resources, it's not. It praises you guys for what you have done. You have gone above and beyond the federal and state requirements for coastal resilience. You have multiple plans and studies, the flood hazard and coastal area management, also the coastal resilience, and you've incorporated great provisions into your zoning regs. What this is about is saying you've done a great job there and you have what are the mitigating regulations or the regulations to mitigate the negative impacts or the potential environmental impacts upon development and future development. You have everything in place to mitigate those issues moving forward. Now, the challenge from my perspective uh is how do you balance that with the social and economic? The coastal resilience or sustainability isn't about shutting down development. It's about mitigating and managing. So therefore, how can we find ways to still meet the social and economic needs of the community, i.e. affordable housing, as one of them? We did a housing needs assessment. We studied the housing market. And when I, oh, one is when Susan kind of talked about our declining family size or, you know, household size. And then I talked about nineteen sixty thirteen percent, single-person households today nationwide, twenty-eight percent. And just for context, that is a huge shift over fifty, sixty years, going from thirteen percent to twenty-eight percent. Doesn't sound like a lot, but in demographics, it's a huge shift. And we also then did the housing needs assessment. And I think what is extremely clear and profound in these findings is that the greatest need uh is on, the, the greatest need for housing affordability is at the lowest incomes. That's, that's true statewide. It's not just you guys. It's something I, you know, spoke to at that committee last week about, is that the greatest need for affordable housing is at fifty percent AMI and below. Eight dash thirty G addresses sixty and eighty percent AMI. It doesn't get at the greatest need. And the even greater need is below the federal poverty rate, which is about thirty percent AMI, actually about twenty-seven percent AMI. In our findings in this community, the greatest need for affordable housing is actually in the lowest income brackets below fifteen thousand. The fact is, all the recommendations in this plan, other than maybe some of the housing trust fund stuff, is really aimed at fifteen, fifty percent AMI and above, because you're not solving poverty through the zoning regulations. It, it's just not going to happen. Other tools are needed for that and the municipality doesn't have the resources. It requires state and federal programs like voucher programs to address that level of housing need. But what was interesting in the market study side of this is we found the greatest need, the greatest need for housing was not only in lower incomes, but it was also a certain kind of housing. It was for one bedrooms, studios and one bedrooms. There's a market shortage of about thirteen hundred units. So think back to that demographic change, that we've gone from thirteen percent single-person households to twenty-eight percent. In renter households push up around fifty percent. The need is for single families, uh, or single bedroom. The need is for single families, or single-bedroom households, housing units. So I know it's taken me a while to get here, but the strategies. The zoning recommendations, it was kind of interesting as we were working through this plan, you know, legislation was making its way through the legislature and we had nowhere, we had no idea where it was going to land and where it was going to end up. But kind of had a feeling it was going to end up there, and we were cognizant of some of it. And so regardless of the legislation, you know, I made the recommendation of the remove or reduce the minimum floor areas on the accessory apartment provisions. The legislation has now removed minimum floor areas and it has mandated, you know, that accessory apartments be allowed unless you opt out of them. So that's, you know, a legislative change regardless of what we were recommending. The same is true of the minimum floor areas overall that comes up as a bullet further below, I believe, the sixth bullet. The duplex units, remove provisions that treat duplexes differently than single-family units. Well, I know people find this to be kind of radical and crazy, but if you think about it, and I think Perkins Farms is a good example of it, the modern duplex unit being constructed today is maybe very different than the duplex unit of the past. That in the context of a conservation subdivision, you know, you could do duplex units with a, you know, shared common wall and so forth, just as what was done up at Perkins Farms. I believe there was duplexes and there were quadplexes or maybe triplexes in the layout, those townhouse units. But the fact is, this isn't a radical, different change. And it's an opportunity to provide a homeownership product that's a bit more affordable than the single-family house. Multifamily residential, you know, allowing it in areas served by public water. So you could allow it in multiple zones, but make clear that it has to have service by public water, public sewer in order to be viable. The, you guys used the phrase attached housing regulations, reduce minimum lot size and reduce heights or increase the height provisions. Just from my work I do on the developer side, you know, I viewed these, I went through and did a comprehensive review of the regulations looking for things that are kind of viewed as barriers to affordable housing. And the lot sizes and the height restrictions, I thought, were somewhat prohibitive to effectively building multifamily housing. So that's where that recommendation came from. The next one's the minimum residential standard. That's the statutory change that doesn't allow minimum unit sizes. Mixed-use development, you guys do have a mixed-use provision in your regulations. You then have your neighborhood development district, which is a much more progressive approach to mixed use. My general feeling is, you know, the expansion of a mixed-use provision that allows for greater mixed-use developments, especially in the context of redevelopment. We're finding the market shifted, things have changed, and that symbiotic relationship between commercial development and residential development is becoming real across all asset classes. So you see retail plazas and malls trying to add housing. You see developments like Perkins Farms that have commercial uses and housing uses on the same sites and so forth. Moving towards a mixed-use model, I think, is a good way of moving towards a multifamily model with a balance between the commercial and the residential. Parking standards, minimum parking requirements for multifamily residential units, reducing them. I felt they were a bit high. Ironically, that legislation last year from the state set minimum standards. I believe you can't have more than one parking space per one bedroom and two parking spaces per two-bedroom anymore via the state zoning change. Ironically though, I thought the state still missed it and they were too high. The fact is, with shrinking household sizes, with, you know, a large percentage of households being single persons, I'm finding in general multifamily developments with one- and two-bedroom units can actually adequately serve parking at about 1.25 to 1.5 parking spaces per unit. So that's that recommendation. And then there was a recommendation related to lot sizes and non-conforming lots, essentially in the R10, I think primarily in in the Pawtucket area. And there's some challenges there based on those non-conformities. And I know you guys have a comprehensive zoning update coming up. We kind of punted and said that needs to be looked at more clearly. Not specifically as a housing affordability topic, but as just a housing and reinvestment topic in that zone. The other recommendations were focused on other aspects of things, not specifically zoning. But the first one overlaps with zoning, that you could consider density bonuses if you wanted to as an incentive. Also, you know, ensuring that you maintain an efficient permitting process. I'm going to come back to the inclusionary zoning, permitting fee reduction and/or waivers. The fact is, permitting fees, while they're relatively small overall, they can be substantial and they do add to the cost of the development. So it is a way to relieve some of the pressure, the cost of housing. But also the idea of pairing it with other things like a housing trust fund could be a means of generating revenue for affordable housing. Property tax abatements. I'm not in the business of recommending communities, you know, give tax abatements. That being said, I've been in a lot, I've been involved in a lot of applications related to tax abatements, both representing municipalities and representing applicants for them. One of the most interesting shifts since around 2015 is the fact that pre-2015, it was unheard of in the state of Connecticut to do a tax abatement for a residential development. They were, you know, a tool for economic development. Since 2015, I've been involved in probably about eight applications for residential developments and/or mixed-use developments with tax abatements. Weatherfield's granted two of them. West Hartford just did their first tax abatement ever for any property on a 300-unit multifamily development. Bloomfield, 280-unit multifamily tax abatement. And the list goes on. It's become a reality just due to the fact that construction costs are extremely high. Rent returns are marginal across the state, other than in Fairfield County. And therefore, it's really difficult to actually make a multifamily development work regardless of affordability. When you add an affordable component into it, the financial aspects of it become even more challenging. So it's a viable consideration. Tax increment financing is another way to get at a tax abatement. Tax abatements usually come on the back end and help with operating costs through the stabilizing period of the development. Tax increment financing typically happens on the front end, assisting with infrastructure costs. And you essentially use future tax value generated by the development to bond the infrastructure on the front end. And then last is the housing trust fund, and I'll come back to the inclusionary zoning with that. From my perspective, the best recommendation in this plan is actually the housing trust fund. State statute allows municipalities to establish funds for specific purposes. You get to choose the purpose, housing and affordable housing in this case, right? And you get to define the terms. How is that funding in that fund going to be utilized? You also get to decide how the fund's going to be funded. A, you could capture, if you don't reduce and waive permit fees, you could capture permit fees on housing to go into the housing trust fund. You could, under the zoning statutes, there's a provision that allows for a fee in lieu of affordable housing. Rather than having a developer build the affordable unit, you have them pay a fee in lieu of that goes into the housing trust fund. You can establish a line item in the budget to fund X number of dollars. And I didn't recommend in this plan what that number is. You guys got to figure that out yourself. But a yearly, you know, line item that goes in to put money into the housing trust fund. You can also, as a municipality, so long as it's dedicated to a specific use like housing, you can also accept charitable donations into something like the housing trust fund where the donator gets the charitable tax deduction from it. So you could fundraise to raise money into the housing trust fund. There's many ways to fund it, and then there's many ways you could use it. If you had enough money, you could build affordable housing yourself. Or you could buy land for affordable housing. Or you could provide grants to developers doing affordable housing. Or you could provide low-interest loans to developers doing affordable housing. You could also use it to help homeowners who are maybe income-challenged of doing upgrades and investments to their house, needed things like roofs or insulation and so forth. You can structure however you want that trust fund to be, provided it targets housing and affordable housing and however you define it. So I'm going to end on just a little story. So back in 2006, 2018 and 19, I worked with the town of Tallinn. Town of Tallinn has a median household income much higher than yours. It's around $115,000 a year. They're a very much rural community, only 2.5% of their land is zoned commercial. Everything else is single-family residential, large lot. And they have been very averse to both multifamily housing and affordable housing forever. And I believe their affordability percent is like 2.3 or something. We went through the P O C D planning process with eight dash thirty J already passed. So we said as part of the P O C D, we're going to do an affordable housing plan as this process, and we did that. And in now's recommendations for housing, we recommended inclusionary zoning and we recommended a housing trust fund for affordable housing. They then retained me to help them do some updates to their zoning regulations, specifically around economic development. And we worked on those all through the pandemic and they finally passed them late last year. And we established a inclusionary zoning provision that says all residential developments of 10 units or more, whether they be single-family or multifamily, need to include 5% of the units as affordable. And if you offered 10% of the units as affordable, then you got some density bonuses. But we tied that to a fee in lieu of affordable housing provision, that the developer could opt to buy out of building the affordable units. So rather than building the units, they could pay $50,000 per unit into the housing trust fund. We determined $50,000 was a number that could be bared by a development with 10 units or more. That would essentially be $5,000 per unit for 10 units to absorb $50,000. They are in the process right now of going before the council to approve the ordinance for the housing trust fund. My point is, this stuff is possible. And even in communities that were adamantly opposed to any multifamily, let alone affordable, they can change, they can realize that they need it, that it will benefit their commercial areas, that it will create a more vibrant community and so forth. The last section of this plan, there was a section, I don't, just in interest of time, on homelessness, which once again goes well beyond the capabilities of the municipality and requires a regional and state approach. And then ultimately, the implementation plan, which kind of lays out the responsibility of entities. The recommendation as it stands in the plan, I know, has been a bit controversial, is that the E D C be designated as the entity to oversee the housing trust fund, recognizing that decisions by finance and the board of selectmen are required in the decision to actually spend any money. That being said, it could be any entity. It could be a specific entity designed for Fairfield, I think was the sample I gave you. They created a housing trust fund committee specifically that oversaw it. You have the ability to create these programs how you want them. I recommended approaches that I felt were best based on my read for the community. And I think the, those involved in the plan agreed on those recommendations generally. Not consensus, but, you know, a general agreement, this was the best way to proceed. So with that said, I apologize for the length of time. I felt it was important to be detailed, and I'm welcome to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bolling. Commissioner, have any questions? Who, Chuck?
No questions.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
The 13% to 28%, that's drastic. So why doesn't the market correct that? Like, the house values are still going up so much.
So a few things. One is, I think when we talk about the housing market, we always have to differentiate between the home-buying market. That is the market that's booming right now. There's limited supply. Fewer people are selling because baby boomers aren't moving the way they used to. The millennials have finally, you know, saved up enough money, got out of their college debt burden, and are entering the market. And there's very few houses for sale. So the home-buying market is surging. The home-building market, whether it be single-family or multifamily, is stagnant at best. I mean, if you go back to the 1980s, we were building 30,000 housing units a year in Connecticut. That dropped to like 10,000 units per year in the early 2000s or after 1990 market crash. They went down low like 5,000 units per year through the 90s statewide, then 10,000. I think we peaked at 11,900 in 2004 statewide. And now, since the 2008 crash, I don't think we've seen a year over 5,500. The fact is, our demand drivers, job growth and population growth are stagnant and anemic. And therefore, not much product's being built. But this is the key point. The market is shifting. If you go back to the early 2000s, only about 24% of those housing permits were multifamily. Today, around 47% of the total housing permits statewide are multifamily. So the market's shifting, it's correcting. That's why you're seeing a lot of multifamily developments going on in other communities and even your own community. I mean, you guys have had a fair number of multifamily applications in recent years. I always want to say Colico, it's not the Colico, that, the site, and I was involved in that. You've got Perkins Farms, you know, you guys have had a handful of them. The market is shifting. It's realizing that there's a greater demand for renters and there's a greater demand for smaller unit sizes and there's a demand for new, modern product. We didn't build a lot of multifamily housing after 1990 and much of the product out there is actually older and aged.
And Harbor Heights, he was here last week, two weekends ago, Harbor Heights. And their new development, they're putting in more two and three bedrooms because he said demand was more for those than the one-bedrooms.
I'm not familiar with the development. This is well said to that. Our research showed the greatest demand is, in this community, is for the one-bedroom. In general, we found my typical recommendations to a community, if you're looking at a bedroom mix, is typically around 30% one-bedroom, around 40% two-bedrooms. There's a lot of single persons that want two bedrooms. They want the spare bedroom as an office, they want it so mom and dad can visit or whatever. So the two-bedroom ends up the highest demand. And we usually say about 15% on the three-bedrooms, 10 to 15%. In general, I don't see a ton of demand out there for the three-bedrooms, but I do have a developer I work with that says he has a waiting list of divorced dads that want three bedrooms. So maybe you have a lot of divorced dads.
Thank you.
Yep.
I have a very general question.
Sure.
So there's obviously this connection in a lot of people's minds between affordable housing and something that isn't attractive to have. and something that isn't attractive to have in your backyard. Have you, in your career, come across any projects that address affordable housing as well as the environmental sustainability and economic sustainability altogether in any unique ways?
You stumped me on "unique." I was riding along with that.
Yeah.
One is, I mean, I personally always try and stay away from design for a number of reasons, is I'm awful at it. Ironically, my first major in college was as a graphic artist. That lasted one semester. I can't draw. I don't have a sense of design, the way I dress, you know, for fashion. So I'm not a good person to say how the best designer. But the fact is, modern, I think modern affordable housing products are much better designed, even though that's subjective and will be debated, than they were historically. I believe in Wallingford or Meriden, and I'm forgetting her name, this woman that owns a building company there, has done some interesting duplex affordable housing developments that are kind of, you know, look and feel more like a single-family subdivision, but they're duplex units. I think at the end of the day, you know, one is, I recognize you guys do have some greater environmental challenges with your coastal areas. I do recognize there's higher standards and so forth. But, you know, stuff can be designed above, you know, base flood elevations. Garage is under, you know, so first floor is not flooded and so forth. You know, there's ways to do this. And at the end of the day, you know, when applications come forward, and believe me, I'm on the receiving end when I do developer work, when applications come forward, people get emotional and communities get upset. And there are times when there's bad products put before communities, and commissions should deny those. But at the end of the day, we should be in the business, from my perspective, in the land-use business, of granting approvals and kind of working our way through the process, trying to figure out, how do we approve it? And maybe that's a challenge for this commission or this community as a whole. I've seen communities, not in this context, but in other contexts, you know, spend the money, hire an architect, design the product you want, right? Or provide, you know, the design guidelines of the product that you want. Consider the environmental, the, you know, social and the economic. And then use a Housing Trust Fund or tax abatements or other tools to get it built. My reason for adding that to it is, just because you can design it doesn't mean you can finance and build it. And the fact is, it may need assistance. But if you're committed to getting the product you want, put your own skin in the game, design the product to what you want and provide the programs and assistance to help get it built. It's possible.
Okay. Would you say that in general for municipalities, being proactive helps them get a desired outcome better?
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's been a mantra of mine, especially... It started when I was running a nonprofit housing organization. We were about creating homeownership and neighborhood stability. And the foundational idea was, how do we intervene in the neighborhood at the resident ownership level to kind of shift the marketplace to perform better? And that was about intervening. And we were dealing with an older housing stock. So just basic idea, you know, I grew up in a 1,000-square-foot, three-bedroom house. My mom still lives there. By today's standards, it's functionally obsolete. All the rooms are small because it's three bedrooms and 1,000 square feet. It's one bathroom. The closets are, you know, basically nonexistent, they're so small. In our program, we had similar housing stock in Hartford. In our program, we had an architect on staff. And if someone was putting their house up for sale, we would work with the real estate agent, and we would do mock-up sketches of what the house could be. That, hey, look, this wall is non-structural between the kitchen and the dining room. You can take out that wall, and now you have an open floor plan from the kitchen to the dining room to the, you know, living room. Just those, providing the idea, providing the person to be able to envision something different or something better than what they're seeing can go a long way. And I'd extrapolate that out to a municipality. Designing what you want, shopping it, marketing it, can go a long way.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. And I'm curious if you've even encountered this question before in some of your other presentations. And my question's around, okay, we, let's say we put affordable housing, we build it. Then how do you get people to actually get in there and get into the programs and navigate the labyrinth of applications and everything else that actually got there? Is that something you've...
I mean, yeah, so it, one is, I can answer with, it depends on what type of affordable housing. So if you're using one of the state funding programs, then they're gonna have their requirements. An 8-30G development or the 8-30G model, which is often used by communities when they do inclusionary provisions. Avon has a provision of greater density if you provide 20% affordable and so forth. And they've structured that after the 8-30G model. So 8-30G says there has to be a housing affordability plan submitted by the developer, which lays out, this is how we did the calculations. These are how, for the affordability. These are the units that will be affordable. These are the rents that they will, that they're gonna start at. They will be adjusted, you know, as HUD updates the affordability levels yearly. They'll be adjusted yearly from that base starting point. And then these are how the deeds are structured to restrict these to be affordable for 30 or 40 years, so forth and so on. And then what's usually done is there has to be a plan administrator. And most communities don't allow the developer applicant to be the administrator because, believe it or not, there have been circumstances where they've kind of not followed through with their plan. So usually, a third-party administrator is identified. I did a project, I was a reviewer for the town in Bloom, in Berlin, Connecticut, and their housing authority was actually willing to be the administrator. There's now a second development before them, and the housing authority has said no. So they're actually contracting with a private real estate management firm to do it. And they'll pay a fee of like $250 to that firm per application. And basically, their application will have an affordability form that will be submitted to the third-party real estate management company that will review the financials of the applicant to ensure that they qualify and then certify that they're qualified. So it's handled typically internally to the development, but with a level of check and balance. And then the affordability plan states that they have to provide you with their affordability records on a yearly basis to the town, that they have to submit them and show that these are the households being qualified, and here's the financials that go with them.
And is that something, those fees, could that be paid out of the Housing Trust Fund?
Yeah. And that's the brilliance of the Housing Trust Fund. The statute allows you to establish it, but then you have the ability to define what you want to do with it. So yeah, you could fund the third-party administrator. I don't want to jump on your question that you spoke to me before, and you can still ask it. But, you know, if a nonprofit community development corporation was created, you could use housing, you know, Housing Trust Funds to fund their efforts at affordability in whichever way, shape, or form. You guys have the ability to structure it how you want it. My only caution is just making sure that it's feasible, that you're not structuring something that's just not feasible. But you can do that.
Thank you.
Are you willing to take a couple of questions from the public?
I am.
Are there some questions from the public that we could have at this time? Otherwise, we'll go right to the public comment period.
Just suggesting a five-minute break. She's suggesting a five-minute break for public.
We'd like a five-minute break. My butt's up for a five-minute break, yeah. That sounds like a good idea. So you're off the hook. Use microphone, please. State your name and address.
My name is Janice Mink, and I live here in Pawtucket. I'm actually, I could be Dr. Mink, as you are doctor, because I have a PhD in architectural history. And I wrote it about, actually, mass housing in Germany in the 1920s, which was social housing, affordable housing. So I do have some questions. And I think design is an important aspect. And those crossing circles that you have with sustainability and economics and, what was the other one, social? I would, I would put another one in to make a clover leaf with design and beauty or attractiveness of this, of this unit. So what I really loved about your presentation was smaller-scale, creative approach, like craft beer, craft affordable housing. And I also think that changes the site of where you can put the houses because you can fit 10 units, like on a Little League field, and it wouldn't be 85 units, but a smaller approach and in another neighborhood so that it gets spread out and people don't feel like they're being warehoused on Liberty Street near the highway. And I wanted to ask you, my question is, what communities have done this craft affordable housing approach? I think that's a wonderful idea. You suggested it. I, I think we could do it here in Pawtucket with our barns, our garages. I have a friend in Groton who has an 18th-century house. He built his garage out to house one member of the Donahue family from Pawtucket, living now on High Street in Mystic, in his garage. And he's, he's a wonderful designer and architect. He did this, and he created an apartment, you know, that was... Groton allowed him to do that. So if we would allow people to do that, we could create, you know, rental properties in the backyards of our Pawtucket houses. I, I think that'd be wonderful, personally. And that would make for a more dense neighborhood. And you would be controlling who lives in your neighborhood by renting the places.
Is there a direct question for Dr.?
That is my direct question. My direct question is, who does this? Has it been done?
Thank you.
So unfortunately, an innovative, small-scale approach within Connecticut is very hard for me to come up with. As I said, it's either Wallingford or Meriden, where this development company has done some interesting affordability products, kind of cul-de-sacs with modern duplexes. Beyond that, I'm really struggling in the context of Connecticut. That being said, on national scale, there has been a movement towards this idea of small houses. And there is this movement going on towards these kind of small-house micro-communities. And I believe there is a land-use attorney in Connecticut who's been trying to work on some provisions for Connecticut for it. But it would be where you would have, like, let's just say, an eight-acre parcel that could accommodate, say, you know, I don't know, 28, you know, small 600-square-foot homes on them in that small-home vein and so forth. The fact is, at the end of the day, my general feeling is, there is niche market demand for unique, interesting, smaller-scale housing development, affordable or not. The biggest challenge is then with the niche stuff is, A, the typical developer doesn't do it. The banks struggle with how to finance it, the risk, because it's different. And it becomes challenging. But that being said, as I think I said, no, it wasn't in, I maybe said it in the plan. Municipalities can be entrepreneurial. And the municipality, through leadership, can be entrepreneurial and kind of lead the market with it. And I've seen municipalities do interesting things to get the developments they want. Blueback Square in West Hartford is a great example of it. The town essentially partnered with the developer and provided, because they tied in public infrastructure, the library, town hall renovations, into the, and the parking garages, which are public, into the development. The town utilized its bonding capacity to get the financing for the development. So they were able to get financing at lower interest rates than the private developer could with better ratings and so forth and so on. So once again, I'll just kind of take your question with his question and say, yeah, if that's what you want and that what you'd be open to as a municipality, figure out a way to make it happen. And I just, I don't know if it's good to say this or bad, but the spirit of Jason is dancing with me right now. And Jason was always trying to figure out those unique ways to do things. And I think you can make it happen if you want it to happen. But the municipality may have to help out on the financial side, and I know that's always a challenge.
Yes, it is. Thank you. Let's take a break.
Good idea.
Five minutes. We'll reconvene at 9:11. Thank you. I'd like to call a meeting back to order, please. We're at the public input section. I'm just going to read down the names as they're presented on my list. Is there a Leslie Driscoll in the room? And so we all understand you have three minutes? Thank you.
I'm Leslie Driscoll. I live at 59 Williams Street in Pawtucket, and I'm also on the Architectural Design Review Board. I just have a few things to say about the report, and I'm going to break them down by page number, just kind of bulging them. Page 16 to 17 of the report says that, "While environmental concerns need to be considered as part of the developmental proposals in coastal areas such as Mystic, said concerns should not favor the environment over economic and social issues or goals, nor should environmental concerns be used as impediments to deter or prevent development, especially housing. I think environmental concerns should be given equal weight to economic issues in coastal towns with regular flooding. It will create an undue burden to the town to expand economic development that later needs to be demolished because of the effects of climate change." And Stonington has a robust flood hazard and coastal management provision that should not be disregarded by 830G developments. Page 21 of the report, "I support the inclusionary zoning provision that requires all residential developments of some predetermined number of units to provide a percentage of affordable housing, which would then be Stonington's affordable housing plan. The new housing has to abide by regulations on the books and then not 830G because we would have a solid plan in place. Spread the affordable housing throughout the town in sensible locations, not just in Pawtucket. No fee waivers, no tax abatments, no affordable housing overlay zones, no trust funds." I, I don't see the logic in that at this point. Page 23 of the report, "Understand what high-quality design really means. Ask the Architectural Design Board for assistance on that. We give free advice every month to developers that come in for, with their projects for this town. And most of them listen to us." And I think that's a really valuable tool that the board, the town has. We're all architects and designers and artists on that board. I'm a design, interior designer. And we give our time voluntarily, free design advice to these architects and developers that come in. Pawtucket is a, also on that page 23, "As a post-industrial urban village, is the softest market in Stonington with the greatest degree of deferred maintenance." Pawtucket has been a post-industrial since the last mill closed down, but I'm not sure how many decades ago that was, long before I came to town. I don't think it classifies as post-industrial anymore. Current deferred maintenance is not due to the mill- Current deferred maintenance is not due to the mill's closing, but rather to negligent property owners and absentee landlords who hope that their neglect of their properties will go unnoticed while they deprive their neighbors of the dignity of a beautiful streetscape.
No, thank you, please. We have one speaker at a time, please.
Okay. Page 25 of the report, accessory apartments should not be deemed restricted as affordable. If you want to open up more accessory apartments to the local rental market rather than transient travelers, then require them to be owner-occupied. Property owners should be able to earn extra income renting an apartment or a couch in their home. Page 27 of the report, be very careful about removing zoning regulations to attract developers. Zoning regulations can have a good purpose of protecting homeowners' quality of life and creating a free-for-off for developers will ultimately bring more resistance from homeowners. Page 30 of the report, if someone is to get a tax abatement for buying up a derelict property, they should be required to rehabilitate the exterior facade and property grounds within one year or forfeit their tax abatement for the dignity of their neighbor's quality of life and the property values of the neighbors so they don't decline. Final comments are creating more apartments and multifamily buildings. I cannot stress enough the importance of good design, pleasing architectural landscaping details when conceiving and building new homes for people to live. A well-proportioned building does not have to cost a small fortune to build. Creating large warehouse apartment buildings that have long walk-through corridors and staircases to get to one's car does not contribute to a favorable quality of life. The model of hotel-style apartment buildings is not a desirable place to live. I support smaller multifamily units or apartments above retail or commercial buildings instead of 100-unit apartment buildings. The developer has a huge responsibility when they put a building on the landscape as that is their legacy, which they pass the ultimate responsibility to others to maintain for the coming generations. How many more Stillman Mill buildings does Stonington want to bear the responsibility to tear down because the owners walked away?
Excuse me, Leslie, are you going to wrap this up?
I'm sorry?
Are you going to wrap this up quickly?
Okay. I urge you to reject this draft plan and put some common sense thinking into the bigger picture of planning for the town. There are some good points, but I think that it does require some more scrutiny. Would you like this?
Yes, please. Thank you very much. I'm not sure what you, people don't understand what no clapping means, no clapping. Stephen, forgive me for the pronunciation, Habekia? At Nine Velvet Lane? 19 Velvet Lane?
Thank you. I'm a resident of Mystic and when I, when I look at this, I don't feel it's going in the right direction. I feel it's going to make Mystic, if they actually go through with this in terms of affordable housing, more crowded, we're going to have more parking problems. It's just heading in the wrong direction. And I also don't like targeting specific areas of the town, Mystic, Pocketuck, while exempting large, it seems like it's exempting large areas such as Stonington Village it has, water and sewer. You have lots of land in the middle of town with Exit 91 that's available for public transportation. So if I were, my suggestion to your recommendation is you set up guidelines for the entire town and not target, common sense guidelines for the entire town and not target specific areas. Mystic has a tremendous traffic problem in the summer and it's not getting better. It seems to be getting worse every year. We have problems parking, so this is going to make it even worse. And I agree with the former speaker about coming up with, actually the two former speakers about coming up with creative prom. Both of them suggested small, affordable apartments, you know, perhaps in somebody's backyard, which I think is a great idea or above a business building. So I endorse those ideas. Finally, we have, from my perception, a decrease in housing in Stonington because the commercial outfits are coming in, they're buying up houses, especially in the Mystic area, and they're running commercial activities in a residential area. B&Bs, they come in, you got parking noise issues and the town hasn't addressed this. I mean, how many houses have been taken off the market for B&Bs? So my suggestion is you start looking at the B&Bs and what impact does it have in our town in terms of traffic and parking and noise and quality of life? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. John Swinderton.
I got handouts. I'll try to be brief and simple.
Thank you, John. You sat here before, so you know what I'm talking about.
This is your bill, by the way. Always have copies for everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Yeah, good evening, Planning and Zoning Commission. It's nice to be here in front of you and seeing you all working so diligently. I am going to read a letter that was developed and signed by five previous chairs of this commission. Kind of a diverse group. We didn't always agree on everything when we overlapped, but on these issues, we did agree. So I'm going to read the letter and then after that, I'm going to follow with a few brief comments of my own. As former chairs of this commission, we are particularly concerned about the adoption of the draft Affordable Housing Plan as currently proposed. We have all had a hand in writing the plan of conservation and development, of which the Affordable Housing Plan will become a part if adopted. In the past, the POCD was drafted by a subcommittee of Planning and Zoning Commission, not outsourced to another board like Economic Development, that has no responsibility for land use decisions. The EDC has its own priorities that are separate from and often at odds with the regulatory regime imposed by zoning. While there are some laudable goals in this draft, there are many suggestions that simply don't have anything to do with affordable housing. At times, it reads as a wish list for developers to avoid regulation through zoning while not getting the town any closer to realizing the goal of creating more affordable housing. Residents rely on zoning, specifically the diligence of the Planning and Zoning Commission to provide consistency and a sense of predictability to development in their neighborhoods and their town at large. Priorities in this plan would upend many current practices without any real opportunity for public debate. If a plan such as this is adopted as part of the POCD, it really becomes as good as law, which is why the commission should engage in serious and lively debate before its approval. While it is true that there have been two public forums during this, the development of this draft, it is not really fair to assume that the average resident could have any reasonable clue as to how this final language might affect the enjoyment and value of their property. What follows is a breakdown of some of the more troubling passages and omissions. Page four, quote, locally, the cost of housing has outpaced income growth, unquote. One major driver of the cost of real estate is the popularity of short-term rentals. This is not addressed at all in the plan. One speaker did touch on it earlier. Except to state that it is a problem that should not be remedied through zoning, why not? The office do not say. Page five, quote, that means Stonington needs to work harder and more intentional in its efforts to maintain affordable housing. Again, what about regulating short-term rentals as a start? Page 16, quote, Stonington has done what is needed and required of a coastal community to evaluate, plan, and regulate the conditions associated with sea level rise and coastal flooding. Does this commission really believe that? Where is the input from our climate change task force? Page 17, environmental concerns should not favor the environment over economic or social issues or goals, nor should environmental concerns be used as impediments to deter or prevent development. What century was this written in? Do we really want to approve an important plan with this language? And a decision-maker must resist temptation of speculative considerations and projections of yet-to-be-realized future conditions that color and merit the, that color the merit of the application, reasonableness of the regulations in place at this moment in time. How does this compare with our resilience plan? Page 19, quote, recommendation, this is an important one, recommended modifications to land use regulations. This is the summary. The comprehensive review of zoning regulations identify provisions that likely create impediments to housing and affordable housing, unquote. And those were up on the board, the eight, there were eight points. Note that this comprehensive review focuses on the production of housing and affordable housing, with most emphasis on the former. Specifically, this section lays out eight recommended changes to our zoning regulations. However, only one of those eight includes an affordable housing provision, accessory apartments. Some of the more concerning recommendations that lack any affordable housing provisions follow. Allow multifamily residence, residential housing in zoning districts served by public sewer and water and target I-95 interchanges at Exit 90 and 92, unquote. The idea of introducing residential housing development at Exit 90 was discussed ad nauseam at a community forum last fall and it was overwhelmingly panned by the community and results of the EDC's own survey discovered as much. And there are a few others. I'm going to jump ahead a little in the interest of time. But those recommendations go on and on with more density, more stories, reduction of setbacks. Page 21 talks about tax abatements. We recently concluded a very contentious debate about this and the town overwhelmingly rejected the idea, yet here it is again in this plan. I understand it may not be again. Stonington must work continuously to provide affordable housing. We agree with that. Page 22 talks about Exit 90 specifically and this area is a vibrant area and its need for development and it goes on and, that section goes on and on. I'm paraphrasing a little bit here to save time.
Please.
I know. Here, we have removed the veil from the plan at last. It really is not about affordable housing at all, but rather financial incentives, tax giveaways, fee reductions, and removal of regulatory impediments for the redevelopment of this most successful environment district in town. I'm going to skip, you guys have these notes, I'm going to move ahead to try to, try to save time. As far as designating the Affordable Housing Commission as the Trust Advisory Committee, we don't think that's a good idea. That makes no sense. There should be an independent commission whose sole mission is to increase affordable housing. EDC's mission is not compatible with affordable housing. Stonington does have an affordability problem when it comes to housing and it needs to be addressed in a meaningful and honest manner. While the draft plan does neither, the 2008 plan was never, that was never approved, actually does both and provides an excellent foundation for the development of a revised plan. Please show some respect to residents for whom you carry out this important mission and reject this plan. And that's signed by Lynn Young, John Swinderton, myself, Ben Tamski, John Prue, and David Raffman. Now, I have a very brief letter of my own and I'm going to go through that quickly if you'll bear with me.
We're six minutes in. You get extra points because of the four previous, your four commissioners.
Thank you. I'll be very quick and I tried to paraphrase here. And I'd like to follow up and just briefly touch on my own thoughts after a review of the 2008 plan. Frankly, I'm surprised there was no mention of the 2008 draft plan in the current plan until tonight. It's very well done and still mostly relevant. I strongly recommend that you redo, review this draft plan and provide copies and I'm providing copies to each of you because I like paper and I'm going to hand those out after, while you're calling the next speaker. In my review of the 2008 plan, what struck me most is how different it is from the plan you are considering tonight. Specifically, the 2008 plan provides an analysis of future residential build-out in the town and the number of affordable units that will be required to meet the main state mandated 10% in the future. The plan then lays out clear strategies focused directly and actively on increasing affordable housing, not housing in general. These strategies include protecting existing affordable housing, requiring housing in developments, new developments, converting naturally occurring affordable housing to protected affordable housing. Very important. Take credit for affordable housing we already have. Develop new affordable housing units and provide direction on 830G proposals. The latest draft plan takes a different, much more passive and indirect approach. It focuses almost only on removal of zoning and financial taxes, fees, impediments that will allow unfettered housing, mixed-use, commercial development with the hope that you will, if you build them, affordable housing will somehow come. This trickle, this is trickle-down economics for housing that will not address the affordable housing issue in Stonington and may very well exacerbate them. We need a plan that is proactive and focused on our fellow residents that are struggling to live in this town. I recommend that you reject the current draft plan and send it back to the drawing board. And again, please read the 2008 draft plan. It provides an excellent foundation for a plan revision. Thank you. Thank you for the extra time.
Thank you, John. I need some help on the signature. Hang on.
Thank you. Or Patricia? Patricia? Thank you, John. Much appreciated.
I'm going to guess if this, is it Patrick or Philip Mimo of a five-something street in Pocketuck? I can't, it begins with P, is the first name and then maybe an I and an R in there and then it looks like Mimo, M-I-M-O, at 5 U-H-I-K Street in Pocketuck. It's indecipherable. Moving right along.
My name is Patricia Morris. I live in the William Clark Threadmill Apartments down on, at 5 Clock Street in Lower Pocketuck. And as a historian for the mill, which we are working on the history, I'd like the town fathers to consider that a mill as an ideal source of, we have 49 apartments in there. They're one and two bedrooms. We have no three bedrooms. We have one and two. And it was, it is very comfortable. It is unique for me because I have lived my whole life in a single home, so it takes a little adjustment, but we have a few rooms, which we all. But my, you know, I'd like the town fathers to think about that as a source. We're in Mill Number One, which was built in 1892. Mill Number Two, which is falling down, was built in 1898. We've had a couple of interested people in buying, but it's, I think the virus was a big factor in why. It just didn't come to pass. But I do know Cockrell's Mill has got a for-sale sign on that. And I'd like to see the mills being used and not see what happens. And I’d like to see the mills being used, and not see what happened to the mill on Stoneman Avenue, which had become a bill to the town. But anyway, I know here in Stonington, about 6% of the housing is classified as affordable. I know the state’s figure is 10%. Having lived in five different states, I don’t know any state that has come up with that 10% figure. So, it would be ideal, but no, it isn’t. All I’m going to talk about is, and I’m talking about my granddaughter. I moved back here five years ago, and she has been pursuing long before I moved back, some affordable housing. She’s a single mother, she has one son, and she, you know, she has been checking on affordable housing and trying to keep up with what’s going on. And just recently, she had checked on, there was two developments on Route One, and one of them was a small duplex housing development, which she was told, if there were affordable housing, it would be put way in the back of the development, which says, what is he trying to say? Are we trying to say that, and let’s be honest, it’s all over the country, it isn’t just here, that we assume people who need affordable housing, they have a problem? And it’s not fair, but it’s fact. Now, and then the other one was the old Ruttman Furniture Land, and that huge complex that was built there. And I know they ran into problems, and it sat for a long time. It did finally come back to life. She’s talking to the manager of the place, and was told by her, we have no affordable housing apartments in this complex. We do have some handicap. So, it says to me, and I would like the town fathers to follow up on this, I’m left with the feeling that what you guys are told by builders is not what people are being told when they actually show up at the place, and has to be considered. So that’s what I wanted to talk about. And I don’t know if any of you town fathers have taken a trip down to the Threadmills, but we’d love to have you take the ride too. And the superintendent will take you for a tour of the mill.
Thank you.
And it is very nice, it is a nice mall.
They’ll take you up on that.
He struggled, you’ll see, he bought it in 2006, and that’s when we had, you know, what happened in 2007 and now. He sat on it to 2014, and then reopened the fall of 2016. And I just, you know, you ride around all these towns that have these mills, and it’s a shame that, you know.
Well, it’s a great idea, and I agree with you.
Hi. First of all, thank you for your patience in all of this. Set your clocks.
Can you please use the microphone, Laura?
Oh, sorry. I was told that I should speak softly, because I tend to have a loud voice, but can you hear me now?
Yes, but I have bad hearing, so it’s good if you can speak up, please.
Okay, super. Please do not accept this affordable housing plan presented tonight. If the content of this plan were to go to a town referendum, it would be soundly defeated. A record number, 2,764 voters, turned out last October to say no to tax abatements for the Campbell-Grane proposal. The majority of town taxpayers do not want tax abatements for developers. Yet here, lurking in our affordable housing plan, the EDC writes on page 29, “Allow tax abatements.” At the area near Exit 90 and Mystic, and throughout Parketuck, where the aims of creating new investment and redevelopment are as important as providing affordable housing. The answer was no thank you last October, it should be no thank you tonight. Affordable housing is very important. It is a national crisis. Collectively, we should work together for improvement. However, the imprecise, imploring language used in this affordable housing draft hurts the very cause it is supposed to promote. It hurts because it is not specific and actionable. Page 22 states, “A community where the town’s actions promote and celebrate diversity, ensuring persons from all walks of life can afford to live in Stonington.” It sounds impressive, but what does that mean? Does it mean that there will be some great social leveling in our town, where the poverty-stricken and middle-income folk can move to Mason’s Island and the Borough? Yes, we do need an affordable housing plan, but let’s move forward with a plan that reflects the smart, caring people of our town. To do this, I propose that we should, one, get rid of the developer handout provisions. The 830G is a big enough gift to developers as it is. Two, get rid of the provisions that attack our zoning and parking regulations. Those of us in Parketuck do not want the parking problems of Mystic and the Borough. We do want blight fines to be leveled against delinquent property owners. We could have had more excellent affordable housing in the second half of the Threadmill, had it not been allowed to disintegrate by its private owners. Get rid of the imprecise language. Let’s talk clearly and honestly about who needs affordable housing in Stonington, and why. Sorry, I got up at 3:00 this morning, I’m really tired. Without discussing the effect of short-term rentals, and how they have impacted our town, you cannot have an honest conversation. Until then, we are just paying lip service to affordable housing. And quickly, because many people have asked me this math question, how many 100-unit affordable housing apartment buildings would it take to get to 10% deeded affordable housing in Stonington? The answer is 20. 20 buildings, 20 brand-new buildings with 100 apartments in each, in our small town of Stonington. That would get us to 10%, but only, and only, if nothing else were to be built in Stonington. Thank you for your time, I hope that was two minutes.
Perfect, thank you. Lynn Young.
Lynn Young, Wampasak Road, Stonington. I gave you a copy of this, but I’m going to read a hacked-to-pieces bit, because of your time constraint, so you can read the entirety on your own. In its lengthy preamble, this plan reads like a hardcore sales job, and sometimes requires us to suspend our common sense. There is a lot of repetitive virtue signaling intended to palliate the fact that a dismantling of residential zoning protections is also being proposed. Before I get to that, I have to wonder about what wasn’t discussed in the plan, but that heavily influences public hostility to 830G and Section 8 housing generally. Let me see if I can cut this a little more. Once the impacts and costs are honestly calculated, why is it simply assumed that existing residents and taxpayers are in favor of becoming the regional shining star for housing affordability? I’ll say it first, I’m not. I would feel very differently about plans that only help residents, because only residents would be on the hook to pay outright, pay as lost opportunity, or pay in diminishment of their own home values. If housing affordability is such the crisis the plan says it is, why has Stonington failed to limit short-term rentals? That’s really a rhetorical question, because the obvious answer is, it’s easier to take away rights when the action is camouflaged as a moral necessity. Why is there no mention of the state’s own legislation that informs anti-public sentiment and impedes 830G? For example, why doesn’t the state attach budget-busting special education spending to the child and not the municipality? Why doesn’t CHIFA, Connecticut Housing Fund something, assist qualifying households with down payments instead of helping developers reap the benefits of ownership? The notion that anyone should or will be able to live anywhere they please is delusional. It’s easy to pay lip service to it until the face of the town changes, or the cost to live here becomes unsustainable for all but the well-off and poor, where you find your children consigned to an underperforming neighborhood school. Stonington must abide by the Connecticut Housing Statute 830G, which already grants a tremendous amount of zoning and other regulatory relief to affordable housing developers. On its own, it has been effective. If you doubt it, drive down Route One in Parketuck. You will travel through an ever-expanding canyon of affordable housing developments. Even the one that residents resoundingly rejected by referendum last fall is still lurking out there, and yet another four-story building will soon be built, adding to the canyon. Had this plan already been enacted, residents could have been deprived of their right to force that October referendum. These projects are all clustered in Parketuck because the land is cheaper and utilities are present. Don’t expect that to change. Anything built in the high-cost Golden Triangle will look and be very different. As this plan admits, if implemented as-is, the small-scale affordable housing it calls for will also self-locate in Parketuck. I don’t care what cherry-pick studies say about the positive effect of that on single-family neighborhood housing values. In Stonington, it will hurt them. Look around, where is the existing lower-income multifamily housing? It’s not in affluent areas, nor will it be. For the Exit 90 area of town, residential or mixed-use developments will consist primarily of luxury units at luxury prices, with some affordable units thrown in, in order to obtain the density bonuses and regulatory relief required to make the projects financially viable. This is destined to lead to greater gentrification and even sharper socioeconomic stratification in town.
Excuse me, Lynn, do you keep on? How much more time do you need?
I’ll use my time.
Fair enough.
Good enough. As proposed in this plan, it would be a huge long-term mistake to allow large-scale residential-only development at Exits 90 and 92. If you ultimately decide to permit mixed-use residential in those commercial zones, I hope you will also insist on generous minimums for commercial spaces. Stonington has very limited commercially developable space unless we remake rural areas of town. That can only be done by forcing the high cost of infrastructure improvements down the throats of everyone. If we did that, it would likely take decades, if ever, for the added net tax revenue to pay for itself. And if we lose what little commercial zoning we have now, it’s probably gone forever. Some people are justifying the adoption of this plan as written on the basis that any changes to zoning will require further public hearings. That’s dangerous, and while true, also disingenuous, because it is unfair to open the door and then expect affected residents, everyone, to pay close attention to the technical actions of this or future planning and zoning commissions. Even if you eliminate the objectionable residential zoning changes and render this plan effectively advisory, it can still be weaponized and used to overcome the objections of residents. There has already been a referendum that very clearly demonstrated residents’ dislike of tax breaks. Another proposed development failed due to climate change concerns, density, and parking inadequacies. Yet, here we are proposing to codify those very things into law. Specifically, incentive programs on page 21, density bonuses. They already exist by virtue of 830G. Why the need to write them into local law, when state law supersedes local law anyway? Efficient permitting, that’s misdirection. It’s a stealth zoning change that eliminates the special-use permit, and therefore the public’s right to weigh in by virtue of establishing zoning by right. If we’re so sure that everyone agrees that affordable housing is the moral thing to do, why the need to eliminate the public’s right to oppose it? Permitting fee reductions or waivers. Homeowners can add a deed-restricted apartment to their property and enjoy a tax break for their sacrifice. Fine, but the devil’s in the details. How would that work exactly? What if the deed-restricted accessory use is to build a guest or caretaker house? According to the plan, there would be both an ongoing tax benefit and a cut in fees. I can see how that would be nice for Mason’s Island and Wampasak Point residents, without adding any affordable housing stock in those places. Property tax abatements. The community has screamed its opinion on these from the rooftops, because they view them as inherently unfair. Housing trust fund. Which parts of the existing budget should we cut to pay for it? Page 25. Removing regulatory impediments sounds innocuous, as I suspect it is meant to, but really means an almost total overhaul of zoning protections in residential areas where people are most passionate. If people understood the zoning protections they relied on when they invested in their homes to be taken away would be taken away, they would fight tooth and nail. The proponents of this document clearly know that, despite all the virtue signaling. Providing incentives, page 29. Here’s where the EDC shows its influence. This is where they are enabled to go out to solicit developers using tax breaks, TIF districts, and a housing trust fund financed by current property taxpayers. If voters hate tax abatements and tax breaks, which would at least result in reduced tax payments, how do you think they will respond to having to pay into a housing trust fund? This draft plan, an 830G on steroids, should be rejected and sent back to the drawing board. If it’s necessary to keep the public hearing open for timing reasons, you should table your decision and drastically amend this plan at a minimum. I repeat my belief that it’s disingenuous to leave it as-is, because it will open the door to potentially massive residential zone and tax changes, and put the onus on the public to keep track of it all. Is it better to have a supportable plan, or one that whiffs but is on time? If adopted as-is, this draft plan will permit indiscriminate multifamily development by right, specifically ignore the will of the people as evidenced by last fall’s townwide referendum on tax breaks, accelerate a changed look and feel of our town that makes a living off of its charm, and will eventually move us closer to some of our neighboring towns that have both stratospheric tax rates and sharply segregated neighborhoods.
Good evening. My name is Felicia Adams, and I’m the Executive Director of the Stonington Housing Authority. We provide affordable housing to seniors and disabled adults, and we’re located in Parketuck. Currently, we are home to 62 people. To qualify as an applicant, you can earn up to $55,950 a year. That means a person working full-time and earning $26.50 an hour still qualifies for affordable housing in our community. People apply to live at the Stonington Housing Authority for a variety of reasons. For example, in the past year, we’ve received many calls from people saying that their landlord is selling the home that they’ve been renting, and they need to find somewhere to live. Sometimes they have 30, 60, 90 days to vacate before the new owner takes the home. Unfortunately for these people, we have a waitlist of about 42. There’s no way that we can accommodate them with their urgent need to vacate where they’ve been living, to find a home that is safe and stable. Another common reason people apply to live at the Stonington Housing Authority is because they’re ready to downsize. Sometimes, as you age, taking care of a lawn can become too much. Managing going up and downstairs in a home can become dangerous and unsafe. And even, you know, as you retire, you earn a set income. You don’t always have the extra income you need to maintain a single-family home. In the past year, about 200 people have called 211, 200 people in Stonington have called 211 to request assistance with housing-related issues. There were 76 households in Stonington that applied for assistance from the United CT Program, a program designed by the state to help people continue to pay their rent, mortgage, and utility bills throughout COVID. The need for affordable housing in our town is apparent, and having a plan to address this issue is a step in the right direction.
Thank you very much. Carlene.
For the record, my name is Carlene Donovan-Rabel. Our first selectman has been on the radio, and may have also penned the article in the town’s website. Our first election has been on the radio and may have also penned the article in the town's website encouraging residents to share your input, Housing Affordability Plan Public Hearing. Or maybe it was the Planning Department that wrote it. It really doesn't matter. But I do appreciate the opportunity to present my thoughts, comments, questions, and suggestions for your consideration before adopting this plan before you tonight. Here are some of my comments in regard to the statements that are made in the report. To the statement that Stonington has an overreliance on single-family houses and homeownership, I would say builders build what people are willing to pay for. And as an example, we have another eight-house subdivision on your agenda coming up soon. So, and also, Parketuck already has a plethora of affordable housing developments on South Broad Street. So Stonington is working towards compliance. Our regulations already allow mixed-use development in our nine commercial zones. I believe both mixed-use development and multifamily development should not be imposed on the RA 15 and the RA 20, single-family-only neighborhoods because residents fought very hard to protect them. The report tries to make a case for affordable housing at Exits 90 and 92. I would prefer to keep our TC 80 and HI 60 zones for commercial uses as they would bring in higher tax revenue for the town. However, I would not reject having rental housing units over the commercial units at these exits, similar to what exists at Merchant Square on Beach Street in Westerly, Rhode Island. I also see no reason why our lower-density zones cannot support affordable housing. There are such things as communal water and sewer systems. Besides, residents might even enjoy being out in nature. In the 40 years or plus that I have been following zoning in this town, I cannot recall any applications that have been denied for environmental reasons. I do not view environmental concerns such as considered in the CAM review or following DEEP regulations as impediments, but opportunities to protect our environment. And I think Mr. Pollan said we did a good job in that area. The draft document recommends reducing parking and accessory apartments. We know that, the state has already told us we have to do it, so we'll forget. Those have to be deleted, and I'm sure you're going to do that when you talk about this. The plan mentions one of the many reasons for homelessness is the lack of affordable housing. Just yesterday, The Westerly Sun had an article about the federal government Emergency Rental Assistance Program. It stated that several states are sending the money back because they have no renters or cannot use all the money before the deadline. In our state, is our state or town participating in this program? If not, why not? Maybe we should, maybe we should be so people could pay their rents, stay in their homes, and not be evicted for homelessness, or even get better accommodations. If Stonington and the state are not participating, the town should be talking to our governor and state legislators. If we are participating, well, that's wonderful. We are doing our part to help alleviate homelessness if that is so. I do not support the following incentives listed on Page 21. Density and density bonuses, an overlay zone for affordable housing, and a requirement for affordable housing and residential development over 10 units, which I think would be a hard step. But if you choose to keep that incentive, I like the idea of a fee in lieu of affordable housing, providing a provision with the fees being placed in the housing trust fund that would be managed by our finance department in conjunction with the planning department. Now let's talk about tax abatements. I thought there was going to be a lot more discussion about them tonight. But this town is very familiar with tax abatements and has been successfully granting them for many years. For example, Man Roland, Zachary, and the Threadmill are now paying full taxes but have had tax abatements. Currently, there are seven entities in effect according to the information provided to me by our tax assessor. Most have been for seven years with varying conditions and for the duration of the project being built. The reason for the bad taste in residents' mouths about the tax abatements is that wind development tax abatement was written by them, and they wanted to run it for 10 years after their project was completed. On top of that, they did not reveal at their public hearing that they would be asking the town for a tax abatement. So please, don't judge tax abatements by this one situation. In my humble opinion, tax abatements could be used in the right circumstances as an incentive for the developers to build qualified housing developments.
Carlene?
Yeah. I didn't, I didn't time it, so I don't know. And I do have one more page.
Wrap it up.
I spent a lot of time on this.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Here are some questions that were brought to my mind, and I hope to yours also. The report states on Page 8 in 2019, Stonington had 9,467 housing units, of which there were 561 qualified affordable housing units, resulting in our 5.93%. That was three years ago. Certainly, more homes have been built in Stonington since 2019. What is the percentage now in 2022? Is it higher? Is it lower? Were the seven units each at Spruce Ridge and Spruce Meadows and the 40 units at Birchwood Farms, all fairly recent developments, all under 30-G, included in that total? How will the newest 30-G proposal on your agenda again of 100 new units on South Broad Street affect our percentage? I am hoping, I am making a correct assumption that Stonington Arms, Edith K. Richmond, and Brookside are all, again, all in Parketuck, are counted as qualified affordable housing. I'm not familiar with other parts of Stonington where there may be other affordable or qualified affordable housing units. But the question remains, who makes the determination as to what units qualify for as affordable, qualified affordable? Where is the list by back, block, and lot number of all units considered qualified affordable dwelling units? I tried to get it. I couldn't. So here are some suggestions for you to work with and think about. First, there is a mathematical error in the chart on Page 18. There is a typographical error on Page 20 where "severs" should be "servers", and you would naturally delete the parking and accessory apartments. Sorry, guys. I'm a, I'm a business teacher, so, anyway, I read well. Next, the plan should document how the numbers in the chart on Page 20 were derived. For example, I live in owner-occupied home, but how does the author know what my household income is? I would like to know, and I hope you would too. Knowing where these numbers come from would lend credibility to the report. The draft makes the distinction between naturally occurring affordable housing and qualified affordable housing. Sex at 830 of the state statute defines qualified affordable housing as housings or households that receive government assistance, government assistance, or deed restriction, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I feel very strongly that the naturally occurring affordable houses should be included in our percentages. In Parketuck alone, I would be willing to bet that 38 West, the apartments at 38 West Broad Street and two others on West Broad, namely Eltree Inn, Loudon Inn, as well as the Wayside Inn on Liberty Street, all have affordable rents and have residents receiving assistance, which could be added to our percentage of qualified affordable housing if these naturally occurring units were recognized by the statutes. Fair Eagles Trailer Park, I bet, is also a housing, is two. To rectify this situation, I recommend, I suggest two things. One, the town talked to and worked with the owners of these properties with the goal of encouraging them to either deed restrict their buildings or at least let the town know which tenants are receiving government assistance so they can be added to our totals. A second approach would be to work with our legislators to amend 30-G to include naturally occurring affordable housing when calculating percentages. Two definitions, deed restricted or government assisted. While I don't care for the TIF, Tax Increment Financing, I do like some.
Carlene?
But not all. One more paragraph of the ideas expressed on 31 and 32. But I do like some of these things in the trust fund. So, again, administered by the finance department. With ever-changing rules coming almost daily from our legislatures, it seems to me Stonington's surest way to add percentages of qualified affordable housing is to use an asset we already own. I have long felt the foreign school at Old Mystic should be used for affordable housing, qualified affordable housing, and I hope this happens. Thank you. You've heard a lot tonight, and thank you for indulging me. I hope you do a good, a good job and do the best for Stonington. Thank you. I'm gonna.
Thank you very much, Carlene. Glenn Frisman?
Mr. Chairman, I yield my time to Mr. Yaw.
Thank you. Ashley Gilli?
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm gonna wait here back there, so, Ashley, please.
Ash, I didn't know how to pronounce your last name. Thank you.
I had a lot to say tonight, but everyone else has spoken.
Thank you.
Before coming tonight, I had a lot of different things I wanted to speak about, but unfortunately for me, everyone speaks a lot more eloquent prior. I wanted to say I agree with everyone else, but there's one paragraph in this whole pocket that I think explains it all. "Allow tax abatements for mixed-use and multifamily housing developments regardless of the inclusion of qualified affordable housing units. Such a policy can be targeted at the area near 90 or throughout Parketuck, where the aims of creating new investment and redevelopment are as important as providing affordable housing." That paragraph alone says everything you need to know about this document. This was written from a developer's perspective. This isn't truly about affordable housing. We heard tonight there's no plans out there that show us how we should be doing that. If you spend an hour on your phone, you can find 10 different documents, including ones provided from the state of Connecticut back in December of 2020. There are multiple documents that guide towns, and one thing every document continues to say is don't do this based on "we need a large development." Do this based on what works for you and your municipality. We live in Stonington, a seaside town. We hear about these developments in places like West Hartford, Bloomfield, large areas of urban areas. They're not Stonington. Unfortunately, this document doesn't mean anything in Stonington. All it does is continue to push affordable housing into Parketuck and give abatements in a way where we can't go to the polls and reject it again. At the end of the day, you have an ability tonight to not go ahead with this, and I'd ask for a different solution. Instead of going ahead and approving this, you obviously have a huge amount of community who want to be involved. Make an affordable housing subcommittee underneath the planning and zoning. I've asked the town why we don't have one, and I hear there's no one interested. But this is very clear. So many people in this room have said they would serve on it. And I do think it's important to have somebody from the planning and zoning there, and that's why I suggested a subcommittee that way. I think at the end of the day, this shouldn't be about getting around zoning laws. It's about how we improve what we currently have and continue to invest in Stonington. And if a big developer doesn't want to do that because we're not going to give them a tax abatement, then who cares? Let's find private business owners in this community that want to help. Let's look at who already owns multifamily homes. If we're going to talk about tax payment to anyone, why not that initiative for people who already live here? That was never suggested. If you want affordable housing and somebody owns a three-family home, ask them. They live in one unit. Would you provide the other two? This whole document, like I said, goes back to that one statement and paragraph. Inclusion, regardless of inclusion of qualified affordable housing. So I'm going to leave it on that, and I just ask you tonight to consider other options and look around in this community of so many people who are willing to help you.
Thank you. Janice Mink?
I agree with what everybody said. I wasn't allowed to clap. I didn't do it. And I do have the question. Affordable Housing Advisory Board disbanded 2016. This was your comments right in the beginning. You said that. That's why, that's how we got here. Let's have a new one. Let's try again.
Thank you. Kevin Baudler?
Hi there. My name is Kevin Baudler. I live at 44 Gold Street. I'm also a member of the EDC, and I probably may take a slightly different perspective to what's been said before. I'd encourage the commission to endorse this plan, which provides a menu of options for you to consider, as well as the Board of Finance and the First Election. So all it is is an endorsement of a set of ideas that all the hard work then needs to be done to figure out what works for Stonington. As we heard before, we have a mismatch between the housing stock in Stonington and the population of Stonington. So we're largely a big, single-family home that was designed for a family of four people. Since 2008, we have lost 648 students from our school system. This used to be a school building. So that's one quarter of our, of our school-aged population has left, which means that the families and the parents who had those children have left. But what's happened is obviously we've all got older. We've got a lot of people living as one person in a house. So, and whilst we talked about single-person households in Connecticut, in Stonington, it's even a bit more extreme. So we have 40, so we have, so of owner-occupied homes in Stonington, 32% of those homes have only got one person in them. Of renter-occupied homes, 48%, so nearly 50% of renter-occupied homes in Stonington have only got one person living in them. So that means we've probably got a large number of houses that are certainly two bedrooms or more that have only got one person living in them. So we do need to find a way to have a more diversified housing stock that meets the needs of the current population and the future population of Stonington. So it's really a supply and demand thing, and at the moment, we have a mismatch between our housing stock and ideally where people could live. And the more housing we've got, then hopefully the less expensive, or there's less demand and doesn't drive prices up. So there are three things in this report that I really like, and I'd encourage you to think about. The first one is accessory apartments. So allow single-family property owners to add granny flats to their existing properties. EDC has heard in their community conversations that people would like to see incremental changes to their neighborhoods that, rather than having big property developments. The second one is duplex units. So removing the specific specifications or requirements that treat duplexes differently from single-family houses. The more interesting but complicated idea is, is to create an inclusionary zoning provision that requires all residential developments of 10 units or more to provide a minimum of 10% as qualified affordable, or have the developer pay a fee in lieu that could go towards a housing trust fund. And a similar concept this commission And a similar concept this commission heard when hearing the Perkins Farm developments, "Wouldn't it be nice if there could be some affordable housing in that development?" So I urge the commission to endorse this housing study, and then the hard work begins to work on analyzing the suggestions that can best create the housing stock that Stonington wants. Remember that a town that doesn't invest in itself will die. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Virginia McCormick. Oh, I'm sorry. I couldn't see. Take your time.
First. My name is Virginia McCormick, and I live at fifty Renee Drive in Pocatuck. We've lived in our home for forty years, and I started down the Zoning Board of Appeals from about 2011 to 2019. I've always been impressed by what a fine job has been done by decades of planning and zoning commissions in our town. There's always been a variety of housing and a variety of zones in Stonington. Our zoning regulations were never implemented to be exclusionary, yet in the past few years, it's become clear to me that there is a housing shortage, including a shortage of affordable housing. So I was very interested in reading this draft plan. In it, I found at least one recommendation that I might support, targeting the I-95, exit ninety-two area in Pocatuck, where there's been undeveloped property for sale for decades. There are about ninety acres that could be developed as affordable housing in this area, and I've attached a spreadsheet at the back of my presentation that shows a breakdown of the acreage. However, my support and my yes vote for a future tax abatement, for a future tax abatement could only come for a quality project that includes far more than ten percent of their units designated as affordable. They'd have to include adequate parking and generous well landscape buffers between the affordable housing development and abutting residential properties. That's doable in the area around exit ninety-two, but not on Cogswell Street. Unfortunately, my overall impression of this plan is that it was written by developers for developers. This plan would upend our zoning regulations, eliminating or severely reducing minimum lot sizes, bulk requirements, minimum square footage requirements, and set aside environmental concerns, all at taxpayer expense. We're the ones who would foot the bill for tax abatements for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund that this consultant and the EDC recommend be funded as a line item in a town budget, and that's on page thirty-two. Local taxpayers have to make, would have to make up for taxes not paid by developers who are awarded tax abatements. On page twenty-eight, this plan suggests reducing and even waiving permitting fees for developers of multifamily, mixed-use, and qualified affordable housing developments. Yet on page thirty-two, it recommends capturing a percentage of building and land use permitting fees to be allocated to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. This doesn't leave much for the planning department, but developers would reap substantial profits using other people's money to build their developments while transforming the character of Stonington to that of Long Island or Hartford, with multifamily homes crammed in on small wellouts. Worst of all, this plan, which is supposed to increase affordable housing, comes with one glaring omission. The first half of the document discusses the shortage of housing in Stonington, and I agree that both nationally and locally, the cost of housing has outpaced income growth, especially for low-income households. In the housing needs assessment, we're told that demand outpaces supply. Demand will certainly drive up the cost of housing. So why did the consultant who wrote this plan fail to suggest regulation of short-term rentals? While the consultant recommends numerous changes to our zoning regulations, he could have recommended that all short-term rentals be registered with the town to determine just how many we currently operate in Stonington. That would be step one. Stonington could require, could require that the owner live on the short-term rental property. A study published in Harvard Business Review concluded that Airbnbs where owners live on the property don't have as much of an impact on affordable housing as those with non-resident owners, and I'm going to give the planning department a copy of that article. I wasn't able to print out copies for everyone. The consultant could have recommended limiting the number of short-term rentals owned by any one individual, which is what Olympia, Washington did. These are just a few of the measures that Stonington could enact in an effort to mitigate the impact of short-term rentals on the supply of affordable housing. A six- or even three-month minimum rental period for new short-term rentals might discourage individuals and business entities from buying multiple properties for use as short-term rentals, thus opening up the housing market. Currently, people who would like to buy a home in Stonington often can't find a suitable home available for purchase, or they may be outbid by someone with deeper pockets. They may be forced to rent an apartment till they find a home that meets their needs. This leaves fewer apartments available for those who can't afford to purchase a home. Meanwhile, competition between those who want to purchase a home in which to live and those who want to purchase a home as an investment drives up the cost of housing. Thus, it becomes even more difficult for the working poor and even some middle-income people to find a home or an apartment that they can afford. Other cities and towns across the country are enacting regulations that limit short-term rentals because of, or in part due to, their impact on affordable housing. I urge you to give serious consideration to following their lead. Please vote to deny this draft Affordable Housing Plan, then go through with the red pen. Keep what you feel will benefit Stonington and add regulations that would limit short-term rentals to open up the long-term housing market.
Virginia, excuse me, Virginia, you going to wrap this up soon?
Yeah, two more sentences.
Thank you.
Or approve the 2008 Affordable Housing Plan in time for the June first deadline, and then work on regulation of short-term rentals. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Virginia.
I'm going to have to bid this on the record.
Ben Tamski.
Thank you for recognizing me. What I really take issue with about this plan is the dishonesty in its suggestions. It actually reads more like an exit ninety development plan than an affordable housing plan. I feel that with this draft, the EDC is trying to make an end run around the planning and zoning process and continue to recycle some of the proposals that have already been overwhelmingly rejected by the public. First, there was wind development, the wind development tax abatement that was defeated by a huge margin in the referendum last fall. What do we see woven through this plan? More tax abatements and fee waivers. While tax abatements do not fall under the purview of this commission, it would seem to me to be shortsighted of you to include this incentive in your final approval after it was made so clear that the voters won't support them. Secondly, the EDC asked for public input to their idea of allowing residential uses in the TC eighty zone. This proposal was also silently rejected during the community conversation they conducted at Old Mystic Village in October of last year, and yet the concept is alive and well in this plan. Just where will this additional housing be situated that will not add to the congestion that already exists in this busy tourist zone? If the EDC is hell-bent on redeveloping the Golden Triangle, why don't they just come out and say so? Probably because the residents of this town feel that area is already doing very well. Do we really want to take a successful, mostly single-story shopping center and add two or three more stories? What will we do with the additional load on our already overburdened waste treatment system, additional traffic and parking problems, and all the other demands on services that this type of density will bring? If we're being honest about doing something to promote housing affordability in town, we would take on the two factors that are most responsible for the problem. They're short-term rentals and gentrification. Five years ago, this commission made the decision to do nothing to limit the growth of the short-term rental industry. Instead, you encouraged it through the liberalization of your accessory dwelling unit regulations. Has the planning department done any review of the twenty-three accessory dwelling applications that it has received since then to gauge their impact on affordability? Apparently not, according to statements by your own staff. As for gentrification, the more high-end housing that we permit, the further we put affordable housing out of reach to those who need it most. An example that comes to mind is the Perkins Farm campus. Ten years ago, that property was approved for thirty-seven dwelling units in a subdivision allowed by Wright. Currently, the property is approved for almost three hundred dwelling units plus the medical center. Now, we can argue about which is better for the town, but where was this commission, the Board of Selectment, the EDC, or anyone else claiming to promote affordable housing now when you had all that leverage with Mr. Lattisori while he was trying to maximize his density? Surely, some number of affordable units could have been incorporated into that project. To really add insult to injury there, the town also gave Mr. Lattisori $1.3 million in tax abatements and fee reductions, all to further burden our waste treatment system and put housing affordability further out of reach. I also would like to take issue with the frequent references to workforce housing. I believe that this term is nothing less than a dog whistle to the business community, letting them know that this plan is super-business friendly. If we are serious about providing housing affordability to the people who really need it, we shouldn't have to reward developers and business owners to do so. A good example of what workforce housing really represents is illustrated by the property known as Loudens on West Broad Street in Pocatuck. This multifamily house was purchased by the Ocean House Partners in December. Good so far, right? Well, our would-be benefactors from Watch Hill kicked out all the tens to offer the affordable apartments to their own employees. This is what workforce housing looks like in the real world. I think that any affordable housing plan should really focus more on housing affordability and less on affordable housing with the A and the H capitalized. Mr. Chairman, seat up an Affordable Housing Subcommittee and let this planning proceed under the supervision of your commission, just like we did with crafting of the POCD itself eight years ago. Perhaps they could start by dusting off the Affordable Housing Plan that was rejected in 2008 after much hard work by that Affordable Housing Advisory Committee and bring it up to date for adoption now. Perhaps it will take a little bit longer than the state would like, but we wouldn't have to give up so much of our carefully crafted zoning regulations that have really served us pretty well over the years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, man. Paul Sardar. Paul Sardar.
Hi, Paul Sardar, twelve Jackson Avenue in Mystic. See, I was going to, I was going to talk all about this, but I'm not going to. No, got pages and pages. I was going to break this down, line by line, but I'm not going to, because what I'm going to first say is, yes to what Leslie Driscoll said, yes to what John Swinerton and his group said, Lynn Young, yes. Really have a personal support for what Felicia Adams had to say. I think we need to focus more on finding, getting creative, and finding housing for our residents. That's where we need to focus, and if we could find some property, and there is possibly some up in Old Mystic, where you could put ten, twenty, thirty units, they'll be one-hundred percent affordable. Ashley Gileys, I have to say, your summary was brilliant, taking that one paragraph, and I think you need to take that to heart. Mrs. McCormick, thank you. Ben Tamski, I agree also. I'd like to just say, keep this K-I-S-S, keep it simple, you know what the other S is for. Deny it as it's written. I also agree, go back to the 2008 plan. Take a look at that. We need to stay, there's way too much here. I think we're opening our town up for all kinds of problems when you put a shopping list as big as what's recommended in here, and it's disheartening but not surprising that the EDC voted unanimously to approve it as written. We know the failures they've had over the years. They're not bad people, but collectively, they've gotten it wrong every time. Short-term rentals has been mentioned a few times. This thing is written, and these opinions are put out there in recommendations, certainly by no one who's lived in Mystic as I have for thirty-six years. There's two hotels' worth of short-term rentals in downtown Mystic, within five-to-ten-minute walk of the bridge in downtown Mystic. I've seen our town transformed, and if anybody believes that any two- or three-family, multifamily unit is ever going to be anything but short-term rentals within walking distance of Mystic, you're delirious, and that's because that's what it's going to be. Smiler's Wharf was going to be short-term rentals. That's what it was going to be, because it only makes sense. It was quoted that $2,000 is for a rental, for a two-bedroom, one-bedroom, it doesn't matter. I could, I could short-term rental, break off part of my house. I can get $200 a night rented for just twenty days out of the thirty, and I've got $4,000 a month. These, unless it is deeded, required, legislated, just approving and proposing, improving and increasing development, at least, I'll speak for Mystic, because again, I've been there thirty-six years. Has anybody been there for thirty-six years? Downtown, a block from the bridge, I know what I'm talking about. I've been involved with a lot of things, including the Parking Advisory Commission that, between the town of Stonington and the town of Groton. It's a mess, and it's only getting worse. I think you guys should just do, there's some good, I'm almost done, good recommendations here, and I think the 2008 is a good start. A lot of, and you should focus on short-term rentals, and I think you should be as brief as possible. I think you should do the minimum that's required on this, on this right now, because we're at a time constraint, I know you guys do. I think you do the minimum you have to do, required by the state, and then I think it's another brilliant idea that a couple people have said is, these people have spoken. Everybody's got big mouths here, and they're putting it to you guys, and everybody's saying, "Oh, we can do this and form an advisory committee." Let's see who steps up and give that advisory committee an opportunity so that within the next five years, it can possibly be a more comprehensive plan that may have a little bit better direction than what this does, because the shopping list is a, it's a nightmare. It is a dream come true for developers and is a nightmare for people like me who live in this village, because there is no way this plan is ever going to preserve the environment, the nature, the quality, the feel of our villages, and I think Pocatuck agrees. Thanks.
Thank you, Paul. Rob, and I'm going to butcher your last name.
Name without the G.
I'll let you say it.
So it's Rob Marsalia.
Thank you.
So, just real quick, thanks for serving as volunteers on PZC, and thanks for allowing me to speak. me to speak. I spent nine years on Stonington's Planning and Zoning Commission, and then, when I left that job, I chaired, well, first, I ended up being the chair for about a year, my last year. When I left PZC, I chaired Stonington's elementary school design and construction projects. And that was about an eight year endeavor. Took a long time. My philosophy as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission was always to bring balance to the projects, simultaneously protecting the rights of the property owner and their project with the rights of the neighbors. That always served me well, and a lot of those people that I either served with or heard their plans are here tonight, and they can attest to how I always tried to bring balance to the, to the conversation. But this proposal to change the regulations relative to affordable housing doesn't either. In this case, we're talking about, you know, the 18,000 residents of the town are in no way protected by this plan. And I think you should take this plan, throw it away, and go back to that '08 plan that's already been talked about. There was a lot of good work that was done in that plan. To the town leadership, I'll offer this. The Economic Development Commission persists in being tone deaf to the majority of Stonington residents, and please remove the EDC from land use. They have no business there. Either that, or give them better direction to what the residents of the town are telling us. Something has to change. That's all I have to say about that. I do have a couple of specifics. We need to continue to control floor area ratios in some way. I guess I learned tonight that FAR is legally not required anymore. I don't understand that. I haven't kept up, right? But you can't open the door for, you know, what ends up being Bank Street with buildings adjacent to each other that touch. I mean, that's not what Stonington is and never will be. We are not a city. Stop talking about removing barriers. Parking requirements exist for reasons, and again, we're not a city, we won't have public transportation. This is not what Stonington needs to become. All right? If we, and know that I'm opposed to tax abatements, but if we must use tax abatements for development, only allow it for 100% affordable housing. I am actually in favor of affordable housing in this town. I think it's the right thing for us to do, but we need to do it intelligently. Let's see, one, one or two more things here. A quote from the document, "Multifamily and affordable housing when well designed and aesthetically pleasing does not negatively impact the value of housing." So, the key here is when well designed and aesthetically pleasing. That's very subjective and hard for you as a commission to control. If you decide to do something with that, give it the teeth it needs so that you can adjudicate what well designed and aesthetically pleasing looks like. I guess lastly, I'll just say this. I agree with the other six chairs, the other five chairs, John and the folks, they didn't reach out to me, but I agree with every word of that letter. And how many former chairs of PZC have to tell you, reject this plan, do something different. Paul actually had a great suggestion. Do something small for now, get something done, and then really go into depth and study. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Chris Donahue?
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. This will be nice and brief. I echo the opinions of most everyone who's came up tonight. Just wanna share a few points that community members have shared with me and that I agree with. I believe this plan will put the burden on the Pawtucket Fire District. I believe this plan further exacerbates existing socioeconomic disparities between Pawtucket and Mystic. And I also believe this plan is problematic in that it significantly, significantly limits the input of Stonington residents and taxpayers. It also tempers necessary oversight from the P and Z in many question, actually, that's it. So it tempers necessary oversight from the P and Z. And that's basically all I had to say. I agree with everybody else that spoke earlier. They had very good points, and thank you for letting me share.
Thank you, Chris. Dave Hammond?
Dave Hammond, Green Even Road in Pawtucket. I'm also the chair of the Economic Development Commission. Just a reminder, the Economic Development Commission is comprised of 12 volunteers. We're all volunteer. We try our hardest to do the right thing for the town of Stonington. And we are an advisory body. We don't legislate, we make recommendations. We really have no power. All right, so the EDC thinks that this excellent plan offers numerous potential actions Stonington can take to broaden the diversity of housing stock, and it satisfies the 830G requirement for a plan update every five year, which, every five years, which is, the mention is due, I think, by the end of June. And the EDC voted unanimously to offer this letter of support. The Affordable Housing Plan augments the POCD and makes recommendations for the relevant town boards and commissions to consider as part of the public process. So adopting the plan gives Stonington a spectrum of tools to consider implementing, both to achieve affordability goals provided by state statute and to address an important nationally recognized need. All these points have already been made. So, you know, the EDC then feels like for the economic benefits from implementing the plan's recommendations include, but are not limited to, grows the tax base of the grand list. So new housing generates tax revenue which lightens the burden on existing taxpayers. Supports local businesses by increasing housing densities proposed by the plan, can support business profitability, because people shop and use services locally that they can walk to. And it boosts business stability. Quality housing that is affordable for people at different income levels is good for business. People like to live where they work. When emergency service workers, teachers, healthcare service providers, hospitality workers, and others can live close to work, both town and regional businesses enjoy greater workforce stability, which is critical for business retention. So in summary, the EDC recommends that the PZC adopt the plan as drafted to give the town the greatest ability, the most options to address housing needs and affordability, and it makes Stonington an even better place to live and work. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Jim Lathrop?
My name is Jim Lathrop. I'm currently a member of the EDC. To amplify some of Dave's points, three of them, growing the grand list is important, lightening the burden on taxpayers is important, that should be considered. Supporting local businesses by putting customers within walking distances, walking distance of them is something that's valuable, it reduces parking burdens. Boosting business stability by enabling people to afford to live close to where they work. This has personally affected my business. I have one employee who lives in Stonington. The rest of them live or rent in New London, Norwich, Griswold, and Volantown, because they can't afford to live here. So this is an issue that has affected me personally as well. So what the Planning and Zoning Commission could do here is adopt this plan, or a plan like it, or a scaled down version of this plan. Do very little with it afterwards. Kick the can down the road a little. It's happened before, it's happened for a couple of decades. The real hard work is going to be taking whatever plan comes in here and gets implemented and moving it into zoning regulations where the PZC can affect that. There's other parts of the plan which don't even have anything to do with PZC, they have more to do with the Selectmen's Office. I want to suggest you guys take another approach, and here's why. It seems reasonable to me that any small town in Connecticut should be in control of its own land use. Heck, that's why you guys are here. That's why you see, that's why you're seated. But in increasing number of cases, Stonington is not in control of this due to noncompliance with 830G, minimum affordable standards, the 10%. So I think we may be looking at this a little backwards. 830G development will continue to increase in Stonington as developers learn to use this powerful tool to create more housing at higher densities. You've probably heard this speech from the 830G applicant's attorney more than once. Denial of an 830G application can only be due to substantial public interest in health, safety, or other matters which the commission may legally consider, where such public interests clearly outweigh the need for affordable housing, and where the public interest cannot be protected by reasonable changes to the affordable housing development. That's straight out of the statute. This is a very high standard. Because of this, this town of Stonington does not truly have the ability to affect the design of these developments. You'll be hearing this speech more and more over the next few years. The abundant infrastructure along Routes 1 and 2, sufficient excess school capacity, and restrictive zoning such as CS 5 on Route 2 will make the most profitable alternative use of many of these underutilized properties, 830G development in the future. It's an economic certainty. You will see more and more of these applications, which would not really be under your control. So you have two options. The town of Stonington has two options. One, they can lobby to change the state statute, try to lower the 10% threshold, try to increase the number of properties that count as affordable, the natural affordable housing, or even try to get the 10% figure to count for sub municipalities like Fire Districts to make affordable housing more evenly spread throughout the town. I'm certain that clustering most of the affordable housing in a small subsection of any municipality was never the intent of the 830G statute, but economics, not any municipal board or committee determines where 830G development occurs within Stonington currently. Our local legislators at the state level are aware of options like these, but changing this piece of legislation is a tall order. They know this, too. It's not likely to change anytime soon. So what's option two? Adopt and implement the GOMA New York Report, or at least most parts of it. This report has many, many ideas and is a toolbox for reaching the 10% affordability standard. It's in this way, a little different than the previous reports, but it did not map this way with the same amount of detail, the same amount of ideas. There's a lot of tools here. I urge this commission not only to adopt this draft report, to implement in the zoning regulations as much of it as possible, while remembering that not all of the recommendations in this report fall within the PZC purview. In summary, get to 10% by implementing the responsible creative strategies detailed in this report. If the compassionate case for increasing affordable housing, which I believe in personally, doesn't land for all of you the same way it lands for me, please consider implementing these strategies to take control back over town zoning. Plan land use using town regulations, once again, after meeting the state standard. It's gonna take years, but don't throw up your hands and give up. The 10% standard's not a, not a standard that's gonna change in the near term. Lastly, doing nothing simply accelerates a process already underway or affordable housing decisions were made for the PZC, not by the PZC. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. David Brown?
Well, thank you very much for this opportunity. Woo! Drop the mic, Jim. Here we go. I still got the reflexes. I wasn't gonna say anything tonight, but what got me going on this was the Campbell Green Project. I was very much in favor of it. What I found out by reading things around the Stonington Forum and in other areas, there was so much misinformation about that project that it took on a life of its own and it was defeated. Now, you can, you could have been, you have legitimate reasons to be against it, for it, but there were so many reasons given to be against it that it was so disingenuous that I was, I was really surprised. So I think we really, the town really missed an opportunity there. And I don't agree with people that say we were giving them a tax break. We were not giving them a tax break. Can I speak, please? Can I, can I speak?
Please don't interrupt him.
Yeah, thank you. I didn't interrupt you. We were not giving them a tax break. We were gonna increase our taxes by allowing that plan to go through, by giving the abatement. As someone else mentioned tonight, abatements, I don't see any problem with abatements. Everybody uses them. We've used them in the town of Stonington for years, and it's been to our benefit. Some of the highest paying taxpayers in town received abatements. So I don't see what the problem is with abatements. I find that some of these, some of these things take on a life of their own. I do believe that there is a group of people in this town that do not want any more development. I think it's great that Stonington has, Stonington seems to have a lot of affordable housing. You know, I live in Pawtucket. People, when they say, well, you go down, you go up Route 1 and you see these buildings, and it's almost like it's, they're condescending, these affordable housing buildings, like where Rutman's was. I think they look, they look great, and I, to my knowledge, they're very nice inside, I've never been in them, but I, sometimes I get the feeling that people just don't want affordable, any more affordable housing in the town of Stonington. Is there gonna be affordable housing in Stonington Borough? No. I'm almost done. And, but I'm for this plan. I think it's, there are a lot of great things in this plan. There are some things that can be changed, but you know, but to hear people say, well, the plan is just horrible, and there's nothing in it that's good, I think that's ridiculous. So I'm for it. I'm sure you can tweak it, and I hope, I hope you agree to adopt it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. That's all for the entered on the sheet. Staff, do you have any input on this? You have five minutes.
Well, I mean, there's been a lot of opinions for the commission to mull over. I guess I'll just address some, some clarifying things here.
Great, thank you.
Someone mentioned this being part of the Planning, Plan of Conservation and Development. This plan is not being proposed to be a part of the Plan of Conservation and Development. It would be a guidance document similar to that, but it's not officially going to be part of that plan. Let's see. You know, the plan does recommend tax abatements for existing homeowners. That's something that was mentioned there. The plan does not address Stonington Borough. It only looks at the town, at the Borough. And, well, I can't possibly address every, all the comments people have had. I think, you know, we better figure out what to do here as far as deliberation on this. It seems like we've reached the end of the public hearing portion of it. Unless the commission's really of, of one mind right now, it doesn't seem like, you know, that could be done tonight.
No, not tonight. No, not tonight.
The board's future meetings coming up are already, are all jam-packed with other things, especially the next meeting. So I might take a special meeting.
To have our discussion.
Over the next few weeks to do that, and give it ample time, so it's not jammed in between other public hearings for developments. We tried to book this room.
And the availability of this room, yeah.
Right, so we couldn't find a good date coming up, so we don't have a date or a place lined up for that.
Well, yes, we do need quite a bit of deliberation and discussion before we can go to a vote. I guess I have.
Agreed.
Yep. Entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
Make a motion.
So vote, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Any discussion on closing it? Paul is in favor of closing.
Aye.
So, make a motion to adjourn.
You know, if you all keep track of the PCC agendas, you can see when it'll be for the deliberation.
We're here, motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Andy. We're here, second. All right, thank you, guys.